My name is Fred Van Antwerp. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. And Brooke isn't here yet. I think she's going to join us soon, so we'll just get the meeting started. And maybe we can start with having a roll call, Mallory.
Van Antwerp?
Here, here via teleconference in Holland, Michigan.
Box?
Nathan Box attending via teleconference from beautiful Holland, Michigan.
Raymond?
Lynn Raymond attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Kenyon?
Andy Kenyon is present and attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Owens?
Jennifer Owens, present, attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Deblock?
Dave Deblock is present via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Blunt?
Andrew Blunt is present and attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
And I have not seen Anderson or Lozano join the meeting yet.
Okay, so we're going to follow the agenda that's posted on your screen. I hope everybody can see this today. We're going to start off with staff comments. So Jenna, do you have any staff comments for the group?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Fred. A couple of things. First of all, wanted to let you all know, Planning Commissioners, Ron Vanderveen, our city attorney, will be joining us in a little bit on this call. He won't be available until about 4:00. So at which point, we'll wait to do the TNR item until he's available. Because specifically, I've asked him to come in to give some legal information to you all in terms of our discussion from last week. And then, if you don't mind, we just kind of stop it, you know, once Ron is available to respect his time specifically, to just kind of, you know, switch gears and come back, if that's okay, you know, for your flexibility. That would be appreciated. Also, I wanted to just give a little bit of an update in terms of process and timeline. So this is one of our last meetings until the final public hearing, which currently is scheduled for April 13th, for you, for Planning Commission to give a recommendation to City Council of approval to, of the Udo. So we have tonight's meeting, and then we have the March 9th study session. So that's our regularly scheduled meeting, and then we'll do the Udo before and after study session, as we've done in previous meetings, previous recent meetings. And the thought for that is, we do have just a couple of more zone map changes to bring to your attention for requests, requested changes. And then really go through the document in terms of formatting, et cetera. And then we have our scheduled February, or I'm sorry, March 23rd meeting as well, Udo meeting. And then the thought there really is to just give a summary report to you all in preparation for the April 13th meeting. In that, we haven't started it yet, but we will be writing, staff will be writing a staff report for the Udo, which will cover really all of the major points that we have worked on through Udo. So the, you know, the changes in zoning standards, things of that sort, specifically looking at the unit sizes and just, just all of the major changes that we, Planning Commission has brought forward in this Udo will be covered. And then that report, we can, you know, work out, you can provide us feedback on that report and then for the 23rd meeting. And then that, that report can also go forward to council so that it's collective of staff's information, but then also Planning Commission as well.
Jenna, how, how will your final report include a summary of public comments as well?
Yes, it will.
Okay, that's great.
Does anyone else have any questions on that?
Just, I guess, just a reminder to Planning Commissioners that the window is probably still open to make some comments on the draft Udo. You still have some comments. Once it gets to a certain point, though, it'll be quite a challenge to put anything in different. So there's still a chance to go through the documents and do something, so please go ahead and do that.
Yeah. Fred, can I make a comment in that regard? Jenna, I did go through the entire thing, looking at formatting. No, I did not read every single word on every single page because I'm not sure that anyone has the time to be able to do all of that right now. I've got some, I've got some formatting questions. Do you want me to just email those to you?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, I'll just, I'll compile them and, but otherwise, I want to say, it looks, overall, it looks great. All of the stuff that I've got is just little nitpicky kinds of things. But wow, what a, what a great job you guys did in putting that together from a formatting and an understandability perspective. I can see where there may be some need, even after it's adopted, to go back and say, you know what? We thought it would work well this way, but once, once it gets out there, kind of like software, once the public starts using it and they go, oh, you know what? We, we thought that made sense. But the public doesn't, that there may be some needs for some tweaks there. But, but overall, I was really, really impressed with the formatting of it. So, great job.
Thank you, but that really goes to Chris, so.
All right. I can't see Chris on my screen right now.
I will pass that along to our graphic designers.
Yeah, nice work, very, very nice work. Looks great.
And just as a note on that too, I'm still waiting through it as well. I've seen, you know, I saw some issues that are bringing to their attention as well. Staff as a larger whole will also be going through it to look at any issues. And then certainly, all of the Planning Commission comments and suggestions are going to get forwarded as well as part of that. So definitely.
It was great to go back through and say, see things that we had discussed months ago and go, oh yeah, I remember all of those graphics and talking through all of those details. Yeah, but hadn't thought about them recently. So, so great work, great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then on that topic also, we have our most up-to-date Udo on our website right now, hollandudo.com. That was published on there on the 12th of this month. We are still making some tweaks and changes, definitely to the formatting, also to some standards like that we're talking about today, for instance. However, we've decided that we're not going to update the Udo as a whole until we're done with it. At this point, it's just too many iterations of it. We really need to concentrate on getting that, that end product, everybody, and get that end product up on the website. So instead, as long as, you know, as long as Planning Commission is okay with this, we're thinking to just provide updates on our website. So like after today's meeting, we'll have an update. It'll say, you know, most recent updates are updates from the 223 meeting. And then list those updates there, if that's all right with Planning Commission. We do also plan to change the story map interactive mapping tool as we go because there may be some changes in that. We want to keep that up to date. But that'll just be helpful for us and Chris and his team and our process, if that's all right.
And just, and just to reiterate, so we, when we do send out the, the public notice for this, and that'll be whenever, towards the tail end of March, maybe Jenna said this or alluded to it. So at that point, you know, things really got to go static as far as the ordinance is concerned. So we'll, we'll make sure that the, you know, the most up-to-date Udo, everything is up to snuff before that notice hits the newspaper and hits the public, so to say. So then people will be assured that last two weeks before the public hearing, the formal public hearing, nothing is changing. It's, it's static for at least that period, so.
Yeah, and that notice specifically will go out on March 26th to the Sentinel so that it's posted in the paper within the correct timeframe. So it'll be posted on that, for that Sunday paper.
Okay. Anything else, Jenna?
That's all I have. Chris, do you have anything to add at all?
Not really. I think we can get going with the discussion.
Okay, Mark, do you have any staff comments?
I'm good, thank you.
I've got one quick question. Now, that means staff is going to make sure everything we've talked about as commissioners will be in this final draft. Do you want us to look at it, or do you just want to let it out and then we'll do it then?
Yeah, we do want, we want you to be looking at it now, especially.
Yeah, but now it's not changing. Can we see the one that you're going to release to the paper when?
Of course. I mean, and we're not going to release the whole thing to the paper. We're going to release, you know, that it'll, the link, right, to the paper.
That's right.
But yes, absolutely. So the hope is, is that we will have that final document done. What did we say, Chris? So like by?
March, March 26th, right?
Well, yeah, it'll definitely be done March 26th, but that's when we, we release it. So perhaps if it could be done by March 23rd, which is when our next meeting is, or our end of March meeting is, the last meeting before the April meeting. And at which point, you'll, we'll give you the link at that point, though there'll be really only three days for you to, to look at it. So we'll, we'll have to work it out. Maybe we can provide it just to Planning Commission as we move along and do the updates.
And in the meantime, it's available.
Yeah, right.
It's, I mean, it's not going to change drastically.
90% will remain the same, so plenty to review right now.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great. So yeah, I did just get word from Brooke. She is going to be a little bit late. So Fred, if you want.
Okay, so let's, let's move on into the public comment period. And just as a reminder to people in the audience that wish to speak, you'll be given two minutes to state your, your position today. And what we're really interested in is comments that we haven't heard yet. All of the comments that you provided before have been recorded, and they're going to be summarized. And while we don't give you a lot of feedback during these public comment periods, we are listening to you and we're recording your comments and we're dwelling on your comments. And so don't feel like we're not listening to you. So what we'd like, if you, if you want to repeat your comments, we already have it. So we're really looking for people that haven't made a comment yet, or that haven't, we're looking for subjects that haven't been raised so far. So with that, I'm going to be looking, this is my first try at doing something like this. So I'll be looking for your raised hands. And Mallory Heisenberg will also be doing this. And once we, once we say your name, Mallory will try to unmute you and we'll start from there. So right now, I see Kathleen Buma. Kathleen, I'm going to go ahead and start the timer, if I can remember to do that every time. So here we go. Kathleen, are you unmuted?
And I think Brooke usually starts the timer after they say their name and their other address.
Okay, go ahead, Kathleen.
Kathleen Buma, 1385 Heather Drive in the city of Holland.
Okay.
I'd like to greet all my esteemed neighbors who love the city of Holland as much as I do. And I'd like to address the Planning Commission, the City Council, and Mayor Nate Box. And I would like to ask them, why are you trying to force Holland's homeowners into radical change that we did not ask for? Virginia Beard, did you want to comment in my two minutes? Virginia Beard, Associate Professor of Political Science at Hope College, stated in the Holland Sentinel on February 13th, 2021, that the proposed rezoning in Holland is a radical change from what we have at present. I question why such radical change is necessary in our city. In the 1700s, Americans fought George III of England regarding taxation and laws without representation. Our fledgling country had regulations imposed upon it, and we, the citizens of the country, had no say in our governance. To me, the Planning Commission is attempting the same thing. We, the homeowners, like our forefathers, will have no say in the laws governing the use of our property that we currently own, or more importantly, how adjacent properties are used. The right to choose how to treat the land we purchase will be taken away from us. Our freedom of choice in the place we committed to live is being superseded by the perceived needs of others. Where do the rights of others end and mine begin? Single-family homeowners are being encouraged to become multifamily rentals and begin a money-making endeavor on their land. This was not true when my husband and I bought our home in the city of Holland 30 years ago. My personal experience with rental property in Holland is not good. In the last decades, Phil Baker has been landlord to many in our great city. Oftentimes, students at Hope College.
Thank you very much, Kathleen.
I would like to request two minutes to be given to me by anyone else who wishes to.
No, we don't do that. I'm sorry.
Okay, I see Linda Winkleman.
I'm unmuted. Hi, my name is Linda Winkleman, and I'm at 340 East 24th Street. And I'm an R1 homeowner, and I, I guess I want to know why planners would prefer to have a congested city and change the likelihood of people choosing to go to that lower-density residential easily without review of plans by the commission and so forth. This idea of gradual densification, well, that's just going to lead to lots, I suppose, if these people who are, who come in and say, I mean, my, my current neighbors are awesome, and we all are together. But one of them goes, and somebody from out of town comes in, and then poof, you know, there goes the land. And it's just, there's not, it's asking people to try and be entrepreneurs with their own homes. And I don't think, I think that's, I don't understand why our planners are asking people to, to think that way. I mean, I think that, and then the other thing that's really peculiar to me is that it's not, they changed the word from duplex to conversion, but please hide the back door in the back so you, it doesn't change the street view of the neighborhood. And, but that is, and so that's great, but then all of a sudden, you've got, it's okay to pave over 75% of your side yard so that new people can park, and it doesn't, and then you can do some of your backyard, so there's no green space. It's just, why do we want to become like a deep city, an urban, urban city? Why do we want to do that? I think we need to allow the R1 neighborhoods to say R1. And in my case, in particular, for many, many years, and it's, it wasn't here when I, when I moved in. But over here and over, I'm surrounded by condos. And right down the street, 24th Street over there by, I mean, maybe that's not even in the city. But anyway, there are apartment buildings going up all over the place. I mean, there should be plenty of housing for people. And if the planners feel that, oh my gosh, the developers of these apartment buildings, they had all these development costs, and it costs too much for raw materials, da-da-da-da. So we have to do the middle and the high-income rentals. But you, city of Holland people.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. There is Warren Wortley. Go ahead, Warren.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. This is Jay Wortley. I live at 311 West 12th Street.
Okay.
I'm opposed to any increase in the density in Holland's older core neighborhoods. These neighborhoods are already very dense. And any attempt to make them denser by making it easier to create multifamily dwellings would hurt these older neighborhoods, their charm and their character, hurt homeowners in these, in these neighborhoods, reduce the number of single-family houses, and hurt first-time homebuyers or existing homeowners who are wanting to move into these older neighborhoods. Now is not the time to be passing measures that would reduce the number of single-family houses. In fact, it is a very bad time to do this. The housing market in Holland, in Michigan, and nationally collapsed in 2006, 2007, and some 14 years later has still not recovered. The stock of single-family houses is currently barely growing at all in Holland, and is certainly not growing enough to even come close to keep up with the demand for single-family houses. Based on the latest data available, the number of permits issued by the city of Holland for the construction of new single-family houses is down over 80% from the average annual level of permits issued during the 10 years prior to the housing collapse. Holland's single-family housing market is still trying to recover. The proposal contained in the Udo to increase housing density in the older core neighborhoods would only further hinder the recovery and would in particular hurt first-time homebuyers who are trying to move from renting to homeownership. Now is not the time to pass changes that would increase density and reduce the number of single-family houses.
Thank you very much, Jay.
You.
Now, let's see. I see some, some digital hands up on the screen. Deb Yetanak. Can we unmute Deb? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Deborah Yetanak. I live at 635 Midway in Holland. I'm against the rezoning. Having been a native Chicago in all my life and worked for the government for 25 years, I've seen the effects of the broken window syndrome, in which I did write a paper on when I was in college. And the effects of that is always a negative effect when it's not properly thought out, as I believe this rezoning is. The process of rezoning will cause a negative bifurcation of the population. And those who are not fully vested in the community will be in direct conflict with those who are the major stakeholders in Holland. The rezoning creates two plot lines of perspective of the system, one from an insider who is emblematic of that system, and the other from the outsider looking in. The marginal, the main goal is for all Holland residents who have had a long-term stake in the community to continue to strive for the integrity of the city's uniqueness and not give way to the devaluation of their property caused by this rezoning. As stated in my last email, again, regarding the rezoning, I, I mentioned the dangers of urban decay, which is, you know, as a, as a dweller of big city, I've seen it firsthand, what had, what it can become. And one thing to consider is the garbage, the trash. What do you do with all of that? The rodent population, which will definitely grow. Initially, this system, this idea is not going to have an effect immediately, but it will be a long-term effect. And Holland definitely is a swan, but doing this is going to turn it into a very dirty, oily, greasy duck. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Deb. Okay, let's see. Another digital hand that's up is Monica Donnelly. Can we unmute Monica? There we go.
Can you?
Oh, we can hear you, Monica.
Okay. I'm Monica Donnelly. I have lived at the corner of 10th Street and Washington Boulevard in the historic district for over 40 years. I feel that these proposed changes will permanently change the character, density, economics, and aesthetics of our city. And there's no groundswell of support for them among the population. It's strikingly clear that the widespread vocal objections to Udo are almost entirely because of the densification that the current version brings to our residential neighborhoods. The lack of understanding of the broader planning advantages don't help at all. Most of the residents I know feel that major changes are being imposed on them for reasons that are unclear at best, not well explained or justified, and with an accelerated timetable that allows little opportunity to reflect and evaluate adequately before making additional permanent commitments. Zoom meetings are no substitute for real face-to-face dialogue. There are already major additions to local residential housing stock in the planning and development stages. Before we greenlight additional changes on the proposed scale, it would be wise to see the effects of those already in process, to see what might be the unintended consequences, both positive and negative, there will be both, before proceeding further. The suggestion to pass Udo without these densification aspects would eliminate almost all of the objections, leave the majority of the plan intact, and be a win-win for everyone. I hope that's an idea that you and council are willing to take a careful look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, I see a hand raised, Mr. Schultz. Is that right? Okay, are you unmuted there? Let's see, not quite yet. There we go. Please state your name and address. Let's see. Mr., you're still muted. Just a second. Is there something that he has to do on his screen, Mallory?
No, he's actually unmuted, so I don't know.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Schultz. No, we still can't hear you.
It seems that his microphone isn't working.
Let me give you a chance to fix your microphone, Mr. Schultz. Would you speak your name again? Yeah, it's not working. Why don't we go to somebody else, Mr. Schultz, and see if you can get that working, and we'll go to somebody else right now. Okay, I see the hand raised of Denise Hooksema.
Yes, so it says I'm unmuted. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm actually Deanne Hooksema. My sister Denise is right next to me, and my brother Paul. We're at 17 West 13th Street. We'd like to provide some comments on what the commission is going to talk about today concerning NMU properties.
Okay.
City staff has repeatedly stated that NMU properties should not require an infill review because the buildings are required to have a commercial component. They also recommend keeping the setbacks close to the sidewalks as it's currently proposed. The reasoning is that NMU setbacks are not the same as TNR setbacks because they're different zone districts. While these two issues are different, they both relate to how new or future structures on NMU properties, not the existing structures, would impact the neighborhoods that surround them. And their impact on the surrounding neighborhood is our main concern. NMU properties are typically small pockets of commercial properties within large residential areas. They're usually made up of one, probably no more than two, three, or four properties. They usually only, at this point, have single-story structures on them. Some have only two-story structures. I do not believe there are any that have more than two stories. These existing structures, as the master plan says, have been in existence for decades and are already well-established and integrated in the community. They also provide services and goods to meet the needs of residents. So we'd like the commission to consider, if the intent is to maintain and provide accessible commercial businesses to city residents, then why is it proposed to require only 20% of the first floor to be a commercial use? This would allow 80% residential use on the first floor and 100% of residential use on any additional one, two, or three stories that is currently proposed. This is not a commercial node. This would be a multifamily dwelling with a small commercial space. Why is only 20% required to be commercial? If existing neighborhood commercial nodes generally complement the surrounding residential development in character and scale, as the master plan states, and if the intent is that redevelopment and infill development preserve or reflect the existing character of the neighborhood, then why should these properties not also be subject to infill and setback regulations that would ensure that all future structures follow this?
Thank you very much, Denise and Deanne. Okay, let's see. I see a Jerry Comijon. There we go. Will you, we have to unmute Jerry? Okay, there you go. State your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jerry Comeyen, and my address is 184 West 37th Street. To me, it is evident from these meetings that most of the effective residents oppose the R1 to LDR rezoning. I've attended. I've attended many of these meetings, and at each of them, almost all the persons who have spoken have expressed their opposition to it. It's also interesting that many of the persons who have favored the proposal do not live in affected areas. It's so easy to say this should be done in an area when it has no impact on their residents. What we simply want is, you know, what we purchased, the single family home in a single, single family residential area. I ask the committee, if it's so certain that this is a good thing for the residents and that there is support for this, why not put the proposal to a vote? I'm certain we know the answer. It will not pass. I believe it's your mission to listen to your residents and provide beneficial services in plans based on their input and not a personal agenda. I think it's time to accept that most of your residents do not see this change as the right approach and that your opinion is and should not be more important than the taxpaying citizens of the city of Holland you represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, I see Mr. Dan Ackerman. There we go, Dan. State your name and address.
Dan Ackerman, 22 Billwood Drive. In our last election, there were a lot of comments about outside money and interests and how it wasn't appropriate for a mayor election or any election for outside interest to be involved in that election. Well, guess what? Now we're in another campaign and outside interests, beginning with the urban planning theory that seems to not have to prove itself, can go unchecked against any evidence, which I've asked for regarding its income. In previous times, I've said, where is the evidence that what you're doing strengthens a city or a community or in any way provides better value in housing? Where is the, I'm looking for it. I want to download the study. I want to know where it is. In addition to that, when we start looking at writers, there's a Hope College professor who doesn't own property in Holland who weighs in, a person from Grand Haven who's part of a housing group who doesn't own property, a citizen from Hudsonville who weighs in, all weighing in that you support this. But when you look at the people who are against it, guess what? They're the people who pay the taxes in Holland. If it was important the last time we had a mayoral election and our current mayor railed against outside influences, it seems to me it ought to be concerning to you that you are being politicized by outside influences. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, let's see, I see Mr. Jim DeBoer. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Thanks, Fred. I've got a question. Could I use a little bit of my wife's time, as was done prior with other people in other meetings?
Is she there with you?
Uh, yes.
How much time are you talking about?
Just three minutes instead of two.
Okay, let me reset my clock here a minute. Okay, go ahead, Mr. DeBoer.
My name is Jim DeBoer. My address is 157 West 40th Street. My comments are about a number of different topics and themes, so I'll list them numerically. One, some people now believe that duplex for R1 is off the table and that duplexes are no longer allowed in R1. Others think it's simply a change in terminology, changing the word duplex to conversion, when actually it's the same thing as the duplex, other than having the second entrance door on the side or rear of the residence and requiring the homeowner to live there. I believe that is the actual fact, but so please clarify, as even a former member of the P C was not clear about that. So, and I also ask that you not change the name of R1 to the more in vogue planning term of L D R because calling zoning low density, L D R, only invites additional densification ideas for future planning commissions. Two, in regards to the homeowner residency for duplex or conversions, what mechanism are you having in place to enforce the homeowner resides there? I know someone who plans to convert and will not live in the home and said he'll show up every three years when the home gets inspected. Three, the study came back that Holland is in need of single family homes. How does adding rentals in the city help achieve us, achieve more options for single family homeowners and give the increased options for others who desire to purchase their first home? Four, what are examples of changes in residential zonings that you can share with us that did not lower the value of homeowners' properties and change communities for the better? To make changes like this, there must be many studies you've looked at from similar sized communities across the country. Give us your vision for Holland that you want us to live in, all of us to live in. Five, what is your reply to the resident on the last meeting when the former chief economist from the state of Michigan, who now lives in Holland, challenged the six year study of Ryan Perkiltpatrick as being too short of a study to give credence to zoning changes like this? Zoning changes should not be based on a short term study or trend as your data can be reversed if the economy changes overnight. But zoning changes cannot easily be reversed, and I hope all on the P C are aware of that. We do not want to be stuck with what Mayor McGeehan said took place in the past after a zoning change when a block of 19th Street went in two years from eighty percent single family to eighty percent rentals and couldn't be reversed. Six, as you consider doing a trial, realize trial zonings are permanent, and we are all stuck with the result of the trial. You can't roll it back. And who evaluates it? A trial like this is really repeating errors in the past, but expecting different results. History is important. So collectively, we ask, and I think I can speak for most everybody on the call, that you please push the great plan of Udo on to council. Let it go through. It's great, but pull out the residential zoning part of Udo. More study, more time. Thank you.
Okay, I see Mr. Dale Hoskins.
Hi, I'm Dale Hoskins, and I live at 262 West 12th Street in the T N R zone. Thank you for letting me speak with you again, and thank you for considering compromises. But I'm asking you to remove all features that will increase the density and then go ahead and send a sensible unified development ordinance to council. There have been three myths associated with this Udo result, as a result of a lack of transparency. One myth, one, the Udo is not about affordable housing, but I thank you for finally becoming transparent on this issue. I know neighbors who rent but wish they can buy a home, but home prices are out of reach. Your plan will make it harder not easier for these people to purchase homes in Holland. Your heart might be in the right place, but if you really care about the poor, you'll look at that, that issue more holistically than just affordable housing. For a community really cared, we'd expand public transportation hours in the network. Two, the Udo does not embody principles of environmental sustainability throughout the ordinance as it claims. The Udo has some great ideas for the mixed use and form based zones, but the densification features in the conventional zones run completely counter to the low impact development lid standards advertised in Article 6. These lid standards promise to cool the city streets, protect biodiversity, manage stormwater, increase property values, reduce crime, and even improve our physical and mental health. I aren't ready for consider these concerns, but please be transparent and honest with your community. Myth three, the Udo claims to promote complete walkable neighborhoods where residents can live, work, walk, and play. This can only become a reality if your proposed mixed use developments contain the amenities that people living in the adjacent conventional zones need to make for a complete neighborhood. None of the mixed use or form based neighborhoods do this, not even downtown. I think this is an admirable goal, but you need to enable these mixed use zones to have all the necessary amenities first that are needed for complete neighborhoods. Please remove all plans to increase density more than what is currently allowed and then send a sensible Udo to city council. And please, in the future, be a bit more transparent in your marketing of this Udo. Thank you for, again, for the opportunity to speak with you today. I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, Dale. Okay, I see a woman with a child, but there's no name with your name, so if we can, you see that, Mallory?
Hi there. I just have a few comments that I would like to make, and I've spoken before. I, I have never heard a response to this question that's been asked by way more than me. Why can we not postpone what's going on with Udo until we can have face to face meetings when the pandemic is over? Many, many people have asked that. I've never heard an answer, and I would actually like to hear an answer. Why consideration isn't being given to that? As far as I'm aware of, and your agenda, I haven't seen any pushback to allow that to happen. Next, with so many housing developments currently being built around Holland, I'm wondering why we're not waiting to see the effects of those developments currently under construction or will be under construction shortly. You know, could we not look at 18 months and see how that has addressed some of the housing needs, satisfied what's missing? And I, I think we're kind of pushing this along without seeing what other remedies have already been in place. Lastly, you guys have mentioned that there are, there are people in favor of the proposal, and we have seen some articles in the newspaper regarding that. And I will just comment to what was mentioned before. Many of these people don't live in Holland. They live outside. So it's easy to say, yeah, that would be perfect for someone else, but not me. It either advances their position in their job or, as a few have been interested in housing, or, like I said, they just don't live here and they'd be unaffected. So, yep, it sounds like a great idea. Lastly, one more thing. I, I've seen awful lot out there about the people who oppose this being racist, not in my backyard. I've seen comments out on the next door that have been particularly awful and not so great in the, in the newspaper either. And I think that the council, or, excuse me, planning commission has the opportunity to correct that, and I don't see that being done. And I think it's really putting a divide in the city of Holland. We're not against affordable housing, but we are against increased density. And one does not portray the other, and, and I think that's being an issue that needs to be resolved very publicly.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Okay, Mr. Schultz, shall we try again? Let's unmute you. There we go. No, I'm sorry, we still can't hear you. I'm sorry. Okay, I see Donna Short. Donna Short, are you there?
Yes, this is Mike. We live at 810 Myrtle, on the southwest side of the city.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a few questions. These are questions for consideration for the whole group, not just the planning committee. Did you know that the average density of a metro statistical area is 283 people per square mile? Holland is seven times that. It's 986 people per square mile from the census, the 2021 census. Did you know that stormwater, which travels over sealed asphalt driveways, brings polyaromatic hydrocarbons into adjacent watersheds? Did you know that when a change in zoning was made in the past, that 19th Street went from eighty percent single family homes to eighty percent rentals in three years? Along with that, I'd like to ask a few more questions. Is it necessary to propose a U D O when our current population density is seven times greater than the national average? Is it wise to densify when adjacent townships that were once almost entirely rural agricultural are beginning to sell out to developers? Wouldn't it be prudent to enter annexation talks with the townships? Is it ecologically sound to propose densification when the stormwater runoff from impervious surfaces needed for parking could spoil the Makatawa area watershed? Is it reasonable, from past experiences, with changes to the traditional residential zoning codes, to expect a better outcome now? Is it advisable to go forward when homeowners to planning commission members recommend thirty to one against the change for the zoning code? Is it right for a small number?
Mike, your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I see Mr. Kendall Page. We'll unmute you. Not quite yet. Do you see Kendall, Mallory?
Mr. Page, you should have received a notification that pops up asking you to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I got it. I got it.
Okay, you state your name and address, please, Mr. Page.
Yes, sir, you bet. Name is Ken Page. A P A G E, live at 788 Meadowbrook Avenue in Holland. Have listened very intently to every comment being made. I would like to identify myself in one way, and that is that somebody had brought up the name of Virginia Beard. And I am the one who debated her basically by a letter to the editor back about a week ago. And the debate was such that, that I thought she was being very disconcerting to, to the community and was wrong. Now, I, I don't have any statement, but I do have a question for the zoning board, and I'm going to read it real quickly. You have a vision statement in your U D O, and I've looked at that very carefully, and it is quite impressive. There's no question. But the vision statement says, the city of Holland is creating a unified development ordinance which will shape the way we live, work, and play in our beautiful community. To me, that is a contradiction. If, if we have a beautiful community as it is, what is it we want to change about the way we live, work, and play? What is wrong with Holland? Now, I moved to Holland in 1992 for a particular reason, because of the community that it was, the waterfront, and a number of other reasons. And what I'm seeing here is a change being made or attempted to be made to densify this area. And it does concern me. The other concern I have is more of a national concern, and that concern comes down to social reorganization. And I see many things going into this situation, which would allow more population to move in to potentially change the culture.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's, your time is up, so thank you. Okay, I see Brian Memberto. Can we unmute Brian? There we go, Brian.
Jerry?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Brian Memberto at 22 West 38th Street. I'm a 30 plus year Holland resident and Hope grad. And I only point that out because I just want to point out that I'm a vested community member. I grew up in Muskegon and I came here to go to Hope, and I stayed here for a reason. I fell in love with Holland. And I, I was shocked to find out, a few weeks ago, I woke up and found out that as a mixed race person, I was considered a NIMBY racist homeowner because I had concerns about these zoning changes. And I would just say to the planning commission, I know you've had, you've hit the pause button on some of this. You delayed some of this. I would say, continue to do that. Do the right thing here. I know why we're making some changes here or why you're looking at changes, but please keep the outside interest out of this. They don't belong, the politics don't belong in this. This issue is a national issue. Single family zoning is the hot item of the day. It's considered a segregous racist item. We need to keep that out of this discussion and keep it to the facts. And that's all I would just plead with the planning commission to do. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Brian. Okay, now I'm looking for, I'm moving my screen to see if I can find anyone else that's waving their hands at me. Oh, there is Stacy Carpen. Well, just a minute, Stacy will unmute you. Okay, there you go.
Good afternoon. My name is Stacy Carpen. I reside at 221 West 11th Street. And one of my concerns is the same concerns that many other people have had, and I'm not sure how often it's been brought up at this meeting, but taxes are going to increase dramatically for these people that do their conversions for duplex. taxes are going to increase dramatically for these people that do their conversions for duplexes, triplexes, and quads. They will now be a combination of non-homestead taxes, which will increase dramatically. And I'm just wondering if that has been spoken about, because that seems to be a very big concern for people that are unaware, thinking their taxes will remain the same at the same tax base that they've been at, especially if they're a homeowner that's owned a home for quite a number of years where they've had a cap on their taxes. And I'm, I'm sure for people that are unaware of this, they can call their city treasurer or assessor to find that information out.
Okay, thank you very much, Stacy. Okay, now I'm looking for other raised hands. There, I see Lisa Caston. Let's unmute Lisa. There, no?
Yep, I think we got it. Lisa Caston.
Yep, go ahead.
Lisa Caston, two zero six West Eleventh Street. I just first wanted to thank the planning commission for these continued conversations. I know that I'm exhausted, and I cannot imagine the weight that is on your shoulders with all of the comments and doing this every single week and going late, so I sincerely appreciate the conversations that are happening. I just really quickly wanted to bring up one thing, as there have been some contradictions down the line, and there was one that happened last week. And I know that you'll be talking about it later, so just wanted to bring it up. But there was an example that continues to be given. Ryan Kilpatrick and Jenna Alswick have given examples for people who want to do conversions, giving them options. Maybe there's an aging parent who you could build a unit and have them in your home. Maybe there's a disabled child, you could build a unit and have them still there, but with independence. A retired couple that maybe doesn't need all the space and wants to, you know, take part of it, but rent part of it out for extra income in retirement. The thing is, those are all owner-occupied examples. And Jenna, last week, and then it was confirmed in the Sentinel that ran on February eighteenth. There was an article and it quoted Jenna saying that honestly, very few people, owner-occupied residents, are going to want to build another unit. Which is a complete contradiction, because she believes that that will then, if the option's considered, considerably reduce what you're trying to do with this zoning. And I just find that funny, because all the examples we've been given, these great ideas, which should be allowed, are all owner-occupied examples, but as soon as that was thrown out, there was a concern, and no, let's not do that. So I just want to make it clear that there are some contradictions that you need to keep in mind as you're giving this to the public. And I sincerely appreciate everything you're doing, so thank you for giving me time today.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Okay, now, let's see. Mallory, if you see any hands raised, I see mostly blank screens at the moment.
You know, you have one Stacy heard.
Stacy Heard?
Yep, she has a digital hand up.
Okay, let me see here. Oh yeah, I see Stacy Heard now, please, go ahead, Stacy.
My name is Stacy Heard. I live at two thirty West Eleventh Street. And I just want to again ask for you to consider just passing the U D O through, but without any residential zoning changes. Strictly looking at the data, there's no data that supports the need for increasing rental, market rate rentals. The data that we're, we've been shown has supported the need for continuing to support single-family homes, both for homeownership and for single-family rentals. There's no data that's proven the need for any conversions and increased need for rentals. So yeah, just, I just wanted to ask you to pass the U D O, put it through, but take out the residential zoning changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Mr. Schultz, you have your hand up again. Would you like to try again? Just a minute, there you go, now you're unmuted, go ahead. Mr. Schultz, we just can't hear you, I'm very sorry, there's something about your microphone that's not working. Okay. We'll go on and find someone else that's got their hand up, let's see. Now, I don't see any other hands that are up. Maybe I'm missing something. Mallory, do you see anyone? Brooke, do you see anyone? No.
Mr. Skydama, sometimes it works if you restart your computer, but if nothing else, you can always send in your comments to, to planningcomment@cityofholland.com.
That's a good idea. Well, thank you very much, all of you, for giving your comments again, and we'll close this session now, we'll close the public comment session and go on with our agenda, and I'll pass the torch over to Brooke.
Yes, Brooke Anderson, present via teleconference from Holland.
Brooke, we're gonna, we're gonna, I think, go on to item number two to begin with, because item number one, we're gonna wait for the city attorney to join us.
Actually, Ron has joined us.
I did see him on here.
Yeah, Ron has joined.
I am here.
So what I would like to do, if it's all right, is just, you know, set up the stage, basically, for Ron and for planning commissioners to ask questions, et cetera. If that works for everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's two items that we still have to work through in terms of the T N R Zone District. One is, and, and both of them came out of last week's meeting. Can everybody see this map?
Nope.
It's not up yet.
No, I don't see it.
Okay.
We see the agenda.
No, we see the, your files.
Oh, that's right, okay.
There we go.
Great, so we made a map. So first of all, I'm going to take the buffer item first, and then we can talk about the owner-occupied item, which was one, the other reason why we asked Ron to join us today. So per the conversation last week, staff understood that you wanted to see a buffer radius. Some examples as to what it would look like if, in addition to, and, and this was just for the duplex option, but that, and again, only in the T N R Zone District. That in addition to requiring four thousand square feet per unit, so eight thousand square feet minimum per property with a fifty-foot width minimum, you also wanted to look at buffers as to whether or not you would, would want that to be added to the ordinance language to further minimize the amount of eligible properties. So we did that. This map shows the one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, and five hundred foot buffers. And we, we just randomly chose a couple of areas that have more, more eligible properties congregated in, in that same area. So this, this map shows in that view, we also divvied it up. So it's up to planning commissioners how you want me to go through this. And then specifically, you know, we could talk to Ron, or ask questions to Ron as well in terms of the legality, and, and let me know which way you'd like to do it. Either go through the maps or ask Ron the questions.
Let's start with Ron.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
It's not legal, no reason to go through the map.
Ron is more popular than the maps, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Well, so if I could just sort of butt in here, I, I'm not all that up to speed on what you're talking about for the buffers, but I think I do know with the, the maps here. It sounds like you want to say that if you're going to have a, said, two-family conversion at one spot, there can't be another one for so many distance, so many feet away from that one. Okay, you know, those, those are always sort of a tough thing, because you know, you, you, first off, you got to have a rationale for whatever regulations we, we adapt. And the rationale here, I think, is limiting the density, which is, which is certainly a valid zoning purpose under the zoning enabling act, without a doubt. The way, the reason why it gets a little tough is that, you know, you have one house that, that's first to get the, the conversion, and then two houses over, they want to do it, and they can't, because other than the same circumstances, it's just they're too close to the other one. We, we've done that with the, with the vacation rentals type place, the short-term rentals, I should say. There, I, I think that's worked pretty good from what I've heard in terms of controlling density. Not sure if it's the buffer or the market that does it, but between one or two of them, it seems to have worked well. I think that's, can be somewhat of an open question in terms of, of will it be upheld, just because of, it, it applies, it allows one property that can be exactly the same as another to have a benefit that the other property that's exactly the same doesn't have. But on the other hand, again, the zoning enabling act talks about allowing provisions that control density. And so would have to justify it based on that. If there are any other, you know, bases for, for saying that we need separation between these, you know, articulating a purpose in the ordinance would be really helpful.
Thanks, Ron.
On the, by the way, on the short-term rentals, I, I don't think anybody has challenged that, that at, at this point. In fact, I know they have it in court, but, and so, you know, folks involved in that seem to be accepting that as, as a condition for the, the conversion to a short-term rental. Not sure if that would be the same here or not, but we'll see if, if that's adapted, then, if they do.
Ethan?
Yeah, Ron. What would, would we have to attach the buffer requirement to a new requirement as well, because we've been talking about reducing the lot size for a duplex or a triplex or a quadplex? Is that, that piece of it required as well, or do we have the ability to just say, hey, regardless of, of the lot size, you know, the only thing we want to do now is change the number of these that are out there. So we don't change the lot size, but we just put a buffer in place. Are we allowed to do that, or do we need to tie it to some other change in the ordinance?
Um, well, it, it, you know, the, the more rationale, the more provisions that would, would deal with control of, of the density, the better. And, and the more rationale is stated there, the better. Do they have to be tied together? No, not really. They could be standalone sections in the ordinance. I think that, that's sort of the question you're asking.
It is, I, I was just tying it in my, in my head anyway, the reasoning anyway, with the short-term rentals, that there was a piece in my head that was saying, well, we're allowing you to do this new thing with a short-term rental with your property, but only if you meet all of the requirements that are here. Because right now, you know, with lots of a certain size in TRN, you can do a duplex, so you can do a triplex, you can do a quadplex. I, I guess I suppose, I may be answering my own question in my head, we could put this additional buffer requirement on there without changing the lot size, but if there are two that within five hundred feet of one another, say that's the, the, the buffer we pick, they just are non-conforming uses.
If there are two existing ones, sure.
Two existing, yes, yes.
And then as long as they continue to be used in that manner, and that, that use isn't abandoned, then they could continue on. You know, of course, you'd want to put the buffer in a section that, that, in or next to a section that says you can do this. You know, keeping that together so people can, you know, associate the two is, is very helpful.
Yeah, well, that's part of, part of the U D O process anyway, is trying to make this user-friendly as possible.
Right.
Any other questions?
Not on, not on this, anyway.
No.
I, I have questions on the other, the other aspect that I think Jenna's going to bring up next. Which I'd like to, I think I'd like to do before we visited maps, if that's all right with the rest of the planning commissioners, I'd like to, I'm, I'm guessing Jenna, you're, you're, the next piece is the owner occupancy proposal I threw out there last week?
Yeah, and I don't have maps for that. Basically, just as an introduction to the topic, again, it was whether or not, and, and I've briefed Ron on this as well, so he has a little bit of, of information going into it, but whether or not there could be a standard that any, any new or converted duplex in the T N R Zone District that is located on a property that is eight thousand square feet or more, or I should say between eight thousand square feet and ninety-six hundred square feet, right? Would need one of the units to be owner-occupied. However, what was proposed is that at ninety-six hundred square feet, which is the current, the current lot size, though it's ninety-six hundred square feet and a sixty-foot width, whereas this is a eight thousand square feet and a fifty-foot width. But at, once they meet the ninety-six hundred threshold, which is existing, then the owner-occupied requirement would not need to be there. Did I repeat that correctly?
Yeah, it's, I, I was thinking of it as two different tiers. One is you could have, you could have a duplex, for instance, on a smaller-sized lot, but only if, if there was an owner occupancy component to it. If it didn't have the owner occupancy component to it, it could only exist on the larger size. Does that make sense, Ron?
Yeah, it, it does, I, I understand that, and, and I think that, you know, again, the important aspect of that is, is having some rationale stated in, in the ordinance for that distinction as to, to why we would treat the one more restrictive than, than the other. Because having some, you know, reasonable explanation is something that's going to make a huge difference if somebody challenges it. And it certainly would be the smaller lots, that someone wants to rent out a duplex as a duplex and not live there, where are the type, would be the type of person who would challenge it, or somebody who maybe set it up and then moved out in that kind of situation, and, and would have to have some rationale that would say why the owner occupied makes a difference to any of the zoning criteria under the zoning enabling act, as compared to the larger lots where you don't require the owner occupied. There, there, there are also some other things, I think we've got to be careful to define what ownership means. Somebody that rents property out might want to have it in a limited liability company, for example, where the company owns it as opposed to them. You know, we could define owner to say it's a majority member of the LLC, or we could just say it's, it's not owner-occupied then. We could say that it's only owner-occupied if it's a P R E, principal residence exception, property. That would be a clear test. I, I think it needs to be a, a pretty clear, you know, bright line test for, for owner-occupied. But then you have situations where someone goes to Florida for the winter, maybe rents out the house for the winter to the second part of the house for, for the winter, would that be allowed? And, and, you know, what happens when, when an owner leaves, decides he wants to move? Owner comes in, buys a nice house, makes it into a two-family, lives there for a few years, and says, you know, I would be better off, I bought a house somewhere else and rented both of these units out, and moves out of that. You, what happens when the owner moves out of one of the, what I call the small property duplexes? Now, does the one unit have to stay vacant? Do both have to be vacated now, because you can't have the two-family there? Those are the kind of issues I think you, you come up with, with that. But then the other is just simply, how, how do we justify an owner being required to live in the one as opposed to not being required to live in a little bigger one?
That sounds sticky, Ron.
Yeah, you know, I.
You know, Ron? Back when we were doing the R Street, we were funding owner-occupied properties for renovation with city funds. And that was one of the requirements. How did we get away with it then?
A requirement that it be owner-occupied?
Yes.
Well, I think that was a contractual relationship between the city and the, the homeowner, where they wanted to obtain the funds, and as a condition for that, they had to agree to, to the owner occupancy. I don't know if it was a period of time or, or what the term was, but yeah. That's a contractual relationship versus a zoning ordinance.
Like if they had their roof redone, they had to live there for another ten years? Like if they had their roof redone, they had to live there for another 10 years or something, and if they didn't, they had to actually pay back a portion of it.
Yeah.
It was a sliding scale, yes.
Mm-hmm. But when you look at a zoning, your ordinance, the purposes of zoning ordinance. Um, there's a lot of purposes that don't necessarily apply here, but that, I think the language that is, is good here is, is to limit the inappropriate overcrowding of land and congestion of population. So I mean, would have to have something that goes along with, with that type of thing as a rationale for, for the requirements for the smaller lots versus the bigger lots. But then the question is, does it limit overcrowding and congestion by having the owner live there versus two tenants? Owner and tenant, a tenant versus two tenants. I think that's, that would be the key to have some explanation of that, if somebody were to challenge it.
So Ron, can I ask if the rationale is to limit rentals specifically? Would that be something that would be upholdable in?
Probably, the other, the idea to limit rentals is probably uh, you know, a valid purpose. And I, I say that because we also have in our current ordinance, an overlay district where it's, it's triggered if there's so many rentals per neighborhood. Uh, petitions could be filed to impose the overlay and then limit the number of rental units. Um, that ordinance I know came out of um, uh, one that was done by East Lansing. And, and they had litigation over that with some property owners and the court upheld that as a, as a reasonable zoning ordinance there. Uh, the intent was to limit the number of rental units in a neighborhood. Um, it, it was rather unique, I think, process because it was triggered by the, the, the neighborhood petitioning for it. Um, but nevertheless, the effect is to limit the number of rentals and the court said, okay. That was in maybe more of a student housing context in East Lansing, obviously with Michigan State, but, but, but I think the rationale was there. Um, the, the question would be, um, you know. Yeah, this does limit the number of, of um, of rentals uh, by requiring owner occupied units. Uh, would the court see there be a rational difference between the larger lots and the smaller lots on that, you, with that distinction? Uh, you know, that's sort of anybody's guess at this point.
I have a question for Ron, if, if that's all right. Um, Ron, is there a possibility, and, and I'm not asking this as like a pointed, I'm just wondering, that something could be defensible under the zoning enabling act, but might be vulnerable under federal fair housing legislation?
I was just gonna ask.
Oh, yeah, federal law will, will trump the, the zoning enabling act every day. Um, you know, the priority is federal constitution, federal statute, state constitution, state statute, local ordinance.
Okay.
Do you know if fair housing would trump, I mean, do you know specifically if uh, that would be a fair housing issue? To limit rentals?
You know, uh, unless somebody could associate some ulterior purpose, discriminatory purpose with it. I, I don't think, uh, you know, that becomes a fair housing issue. Um, you know, certainly if there are accommodations needed to, to allow a disabled person that, you know, but that's a different issue. Um, you know, we, and I, I don't know that, you know, this would have any type of disparate impact on a minority, or somebody could establish something like that. Um, that would be the only fair housing issue aspect that I can think of.
So Ron, if it doesn't affect, like, it's not specifically spelled out as like race or income or whatever issue, then it would be, it would be because of density alone.
Well, unless there's that disparate impact, which doesn't speak specifically to anything in particular, it's a kind of an overarching. Is there a population that's, that's disproportionately affected by the changes? And so that wouldn't be so obvious as just income or race or ethnicity or the other protected classes.
I've also seen that flagged in analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, which is not the same as being legally vulnerable. Mm-huh. But is related to federal uh, funding for local governments. But I, you know, Ron, Ron's the expert on whether it's legally vulnerable. I've just seen it as sort of a policy thing in that fair home, housing realm to, 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 as just determining, or excuse me, distinguishing between owners and renters in zoning.
Cause the owner occupied, I feel like I, we asked the Fair Housing Center about whether or not the owner occupied piece was an issue in, in, in fair housing law. Not just the limiting rentals, but I don't remember. I, I, I think they responded in saying there wasn't anything in particular that they saw as an issue, but I could be wrong about that.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that there, there would be any fair housing aspect to that. You know, the way I would expect someone would, would challenge that. If they were going to challenge it, and I'm not saying they'd prevail, but, but, you know, to say that. Um, you know, you're not limiting density and congestion by requiring owners to occupy one half of a duplex on a small lot, you still have the same number of, of duplexes. You know, potentially. Unlike the buffer, which obviously does decrease density and congestion.
Ron, did you say that there, that Holland does have an overlay?
There's an overlay.
It's been removed from Udo. It's not in the draft.
Said to remove it. That was.
Yeah, that's in the, it's in the existing ordinance, zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Planning Commission, we had brought that earlier on and Planning Commission said to remove it.
Mm-hmm. And my understanding is it's actually never been used. Uh, is that accurate?
I don't think it has, no.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question tomorrow.
It was adopted about five, six years ago, maybe seven years ago, and, and um, the concern at that time was to, to encourage a single-family owner occupied occupancy as opposed to rentals. Um, and uh, yeah, I, I've never heard of it being triggered.
There was only one time that a, a neighborhood that I recollect was seriously looking at doing that, and they, they ended up looking at you know, all the qualifiers and stuff and found out that uh, they weren't, I think there was like a 20% trigger or something like that in there, but the issue that was bringing, bringing these folks together with this additional rental, whatever, it was not going to trigger a threshold thing, so it never, it never got legs, so.
It was by the Hope College neighborhoods though, right?
Oh.
Want to say it was more over by the Aquatic Center.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wonder if I could just reach out to Mark Cornelis real quickly, our community development coordinator, and see just whether or not um, he has anything, if he knows of anything in terms of the conversation about owner occupancy and fair housing.
Yeah, and, and while you're doing, I have a, I have a question for Ron and for staff. Um, one of, one of my concerns with, with this whole subject matter and with the TRN district is um, I would, I'd like to limit the number of potential conversions there are to a reasonable number and limit the concentration of potential conversions. And it appears to me that it would be easier to put those limits in place and easier to enforce limits that we would put in place if we've got um, lot size limits and then buffer limits rather than going the owner occupancy route with it. Um, I mean, I really like the idea of owner occupancy, but it's starting to look like a sticky wicket to me in terms of enforcement.
Yeah.
And, and uh, not only enforcement, but, but challenges to it as well. And that's why I guess I'm asking the question to, to staff as well. I'm guessing that it would be easier for staff to enforce uh, the prevention of a, a conversion. Um, if we're looking purely at lot size limitations and buffer limitations, rather than having to make staff continually monitor owner occupancy.
It would be easier, though, I would say would be even easier if you just increased the, the lot size standard. I mean, instead of, instead of doing the 8,000, you know, it's easier to just stay with what you even have, you know, at that point, because I think looking at this map. Um, quite literally, you may be having fewer eligible properties than are even in existence now.
I would, I would completely, I'd completely agree with Jenna that, um, with her statement there. I quite honestly, if I think that if Planning Commission is looking to do, um, you know, even a very gentle additional amount of housing in the TNR area, I think including any buffer um, or, or anything like this, you're, you're probably gonna end up having less eligible homes than the existing ordinance, the way it reads right now.
Okay.
Well, unless, unless we had the buffer, unless we had the smallest buffer, 100 feet. Uh, I'm, I'm just looking at the map now, and I see that if we were to choose the 100 feet, it would achieve some objectives. Like, if you remember, the concern we had with this, and that was like a year and a half ago or so, in fact, we even asked this question at the library, was, our biggest fear was that an entire block would go, would be converted. And so there was the sudden feeling like the character of the neighborhood would change if an entire block were to change, but um, if you were to limit it, if there was a buffer of 100 feet, it would only affect a few houses, a few of the total number. Right now, we have 171 eligible properties with our current standard, and there's only 30 that have converted. Um, if we look at the, the proposal that we had, it was only going to increase to 248 properties. And I think as some wise person said, we're probably looking at a very small, small number of those that probably would convert. And so I think if we wanted to be conservative and careful with it, we could go to 8,000 feet with a 100-foot buffer. And that would still, that would limit it to having this, it, there'll be a limited effect on changing the character of the neighborhood because it would only affect a few houses nearby. It would still allow there to be an increase from 171 to 248, so it would still achieve some kind of modest densification, and it would still not affect the character of the neighborhood if we put a 100-foot buffer in. So.
Yeah, I'm with Brad on this too. I feel like if we're not gonna do owner occupied, that we need to have gentle density and make sure we're preserving blocks, and I don't know how else we do it.
Yeah.
I would affirm that, Fred, and I'd also love for someone, because we're so good at generating maps, with that 100-foot buffer, does that 248 go down to 220 or 200?
I think it's worth noting, and we don't actually have this condition anywhere, but say we had a block of 50-foot wide lots, 8,000 square feet, so every lot on this hypothetical block would be eligible. With 100-foot buffer, that means only one out of every five houses could convert, right? Because 100 feet would be two 50-foot lots on either side taken out of commission, so that's one out of every five.
Yeah.
Um, and I, maybe that for the, for the planning commission, is that the ratio that you, that makes sense to you? Uh, one-fifth of the houses on that hypothetical block?
I'm, I'm gonna arg, I'm gonna argue with your percentage on that or your fraction, Chris. It's a, it's every, it would be every third house, right, or every fourth house?
Oh, that's true, cause the buffer, buffers would overlap, right?
Right.
Good point, good point.
Yeah, so it could be, it could be a, a, uh, a, a conversion to houses and a conversion to houses. So there, not only would they not be right next to each other with 100-foot buffer, there'd actually have to be at least two in between.
Yeah, right.
Well, and you'd have them back to back too, so if you.
You couldn't, you couldn't have.
Exactly, like the houses behind them wouldn't be able to either.
I think that would actually achieve what we were talking about trying to achieve, and that is to never, never affect the character of a street, of a whole street. And so the 100-foot buffer would not reduce the number uh, very much, and it would achieve the limiting, the effect on the character of the neighborhood.
So I.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Mark.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I I, I think that we might want to look at this a little bit more, because I, I'm, I'm gonna stand by my current or, or the previous statement too, and kind of what Jenna said too, I I think if you honestly, if you, if you go with 100-foot buffer, I think that you're gonna have less eligible properties um, than are currently eligible under the 9,600 square foot and, and 60-foot kind of regiment. And I mean, if that's what planning commissioners want to do, I mean, we can certainly look at that, but you know, look, looking at, you know, the screen right in front of us right now, you know, you plop down, if you pick one of those homes, you're basically taking out five adjacent eligible properties. You know, and if you kind of spread that out around, uh, around this other map here, I think you're, I, I think we'd want to take a little closer look at that, but certainly if that's, if that's the direction that Planning Commission wants to go.
Mark, that was our question. In other words, we don't want to screw up any one block. And so let's look at that and let's ask you to do the numbers, because I know that was my question earlier. And let's see what those numbers are. If it's 200, okay, if it's 220, it's gotta be less than 248.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, that's very difficult to do on a map, right? Because you don't know exactly which property to plot. I mean.
Yeah, you'd have to look at every.
Every single, right, all the different variables. But second of all, I think it should be kept in mind, first of all, that it is cumbersome for staff, just as an FYI, to have to do this um, for any, for any one of these conversions, just as, just letting you know. Um, but also, you know, we have to keep in mind that, yeah, there's that cluster in the um, historic district area on 12th Street. We have to keep in mind, though, that any of those homes would need to go through a very thorough process with the Historic District Commission, getting a certificate of occupant, of uh, appropriateness. Um, and upheld to very high standards for any type of a conversion to happen. And so we have to think about that. We also have to think about, I would urge you to think about what Ryan had talked about, about the 180,000 uh, true cash value. So those are just the properties that have a blue highlight around them. Um, those are the ones where it would make financial feasibility sense that potentially um, to convert them for, you know, as a, as a occupant, you know, as a investor-owned um, uh, property. Um, and then looking over on the east side of this map, um, you know, that, that's the Hope College area. So uh.
You mean, you mean south of 16th Street?
Yeah, so I mean, to, to an extent, there are quite a few of uh, Hope students that, that live in that area as well. Um, so again, I, I, and looking at the true cash value, I mean, some of them are, some of them aren't um, highlighted. Uh, and there are actually existing two units in a lot of these properties. That's what the hatchet mark is. Um, those are already two plus units. Um, so they're, they're, they wouldn't be affected by, by this if this is just for two units. So I think it's important to just digest the map a little bit further to see whether or not this is truly um, you know, echoing what Mark said and what, what I said previously, truly um, going to meet the intent, you know, a significant intent.
I'm going to throw my two cents out there and say that I'm not a huge fan of the buffer, and I'm the owner occupied, I think, also um, is a little too cumbersome, especially for staff. And legal issue there, I think, would be too hard to deal with. Um, what I would rather see, and this is gonna throw a wrench into everything, and we don't really have to talk about it if you don't want to, but staff can kind of run with it if they want, but I'd rather see a larger lot in the TNR become like an attached, like two-unit, single-family on a larger lot. Now, that could be, you don't, you can't require it to be owner occupied, but you'd have two single-family homes on a single lot.
Are we talking vacant properties here?
We're talking vacant properties, or if somebody's home burned down, and let's say they want to own a condo and attach it to theirs and then sell the other one. But it'd be individual owner occupied. But, just an idea.
My, my, uh, my view of this map uh, shows that there's three clusters of homes that are close enough to each other where unless you put some kind of a buffer in place, there could be a run of conversions all on one street. But the remainder of the, of this whole zone district, the, the conversions would not have an effect on the neighborhood like we were concerned about. Most of them are scattered all across. On the neighborhood like we were concerned about. Most of them are scattered all across and not even close to each other. And so I I don't I don't see there to be if we're if we're still interested in expanding the eligible properties for conversions. Without affecting the character of anything. I I think it's still a viable idea if we want to constrain it somehow. I do think that it'll increase the numbers of possible properties, but not likely to have a large effect.
And and one of those three, Fred, is the historic district.
Yeah, so that's not likely to take place there, really.
Well, I don't know. I mean, you gotta have room for the nanny, and if you want her to live on premises, she might want her own apartment.
It's possible. Provocative, Dave.
On on Twelfth Street, of course. But that's where the density is. If you look at this map. And of course, that could be the caretaker for senior citizens also.
I actually can attest to that because I know a couple that lived on Twelfth Street and their nanny lived in their house with them.
Does that require does that require a second unit?
Make it a more desirable hire.
We uh, this discussion is different from the discussion on accessory dwelling units, though. Attached success, excuse me, detached accessory dwelling units. The you know, the changes from the current ordinance are relatively minimal. Those are already allowed. I guess we could have a different discussion about attached like we did for LDR.
Yeah, and and detached are allowed in this neighborhood currently.
Yes.
We have some in this neighborhood. Yeah, there's there's at least one I know of in the in the Washington Square District.
There's one on Twelfth Street as well.
Yeah.
Right in the corner of Pine.
That would be a lot easier for somebody to do in the historic district than to convert their home. Within the historic district guidelines.
So if so if I so if I happen to live in the historic district and I wanted my nanny to live in in the home with us. And I wasn't going to rent that space to the nanny. Do I have to worry about a conversion? Or can I just have the nanny living in the home? You know, I'm thinking I'm thinking I'm I'm a seventies television guy, so I'm thinking about the Brady Bunch. I'm thinking about Alice living off of the kitchen.
If she has her own kitchen, then you do.
No, that's not true. Can have any any number of kitchens. You know, family homes, so. So, yeah, you don't.
And he could be living as a part of the household.
Yep.
Okay.
We're getting off on a tangent.
Yeah, we are. I'm I'm back. I'm 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 back to where we were last week without the buffer that's on it, especially now. And 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 thank you, Jennifer, reminding us again about the historic district because that keep popping out of my head and it needs to to stick there. That the the odds of those being converted in the historic district are incredibly small based on the the property values that are there. And all of the requirements that there are within the historic district that that overlay all of this. So and and Fred, you said there were three. I think I I know where the second one is, which is just south of Sixteenth Street on the east side of this map.
Yeah.
The rest of them seem kind of scattered to me, but I see two other areas potentially where you're talking about, but those aren't incredibly dense either.
No, they're not dense. I mean, I just don't see this as much of a problem. I mean, especially when you consider that it's not a very popular idea to begin with. I mean, currently, there's a hundred and seventy-one that are eligible, but there's only thirty takers. And so it's 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 not a very popular idea in Holland, at least right now.
Right, and I'll chime in with Ryan Philpatrick's numbers last week. I think he said in the past six years, no one has converted a single family to a two unit. And we're only seeing two units convert to single family.
Yeah.
So I'm pretty comfortable with no buffer and lowering the lot size restrictions.
And and there is a there is a small, a very small, but an important segment that after I heard Brian's presentation twice, once at city council level and once here. That, you know, sixty percent of our households roughly in the city of Holland are one or two family households. And the the idea of a small conversion like this, or this goes even ties into the ADU. Is that it creates the potential for a much less expensive rental unit than you would find even in one of the larger apartment complexes. And, you know, we did, we we had some public comment today about, you know, the questions about about mother-in-law apartments. Or a disabled family member. That's it. That is going to be a small segment of the community. But but a very important, a very important need to be able to have out there for those small, that small group of people that might want to have that need.
Yeah, Jen, I don't think you've contradicted yourself at all, actually, because we don't know if there's going to be a ton. And we honestly don't know if there that there might just be a few, and that's fine, but to allow the property owner to make that decision on their own. That's up to them.
So I just want to get clarity on what Nathan was saying, the mother-in-law or like family member who's disabled. If it's not a rental, or then they don't need to apply for this. Is this is that correct?
Not not necessarily, if it's not going to be rented, well, I'll leave that up to staff. If they're gonna if they're gonna convert, and and we're bouncing into LDR, and I apologize for that. I I pulled this off onto that tangent. But LDR, I want to add, I've got a disabled son. I want to add a apartment onto my house as an except an attached accessory dwelling unit. But I'm not going to rent it to him. He's just going to live there. Can we do that now, or does it require the changes that we have under Udo?
Requires the changes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It requires the changes because it would be an attached in LDR.
Yep. Yep.
So that would be an attached accessory dwelling unit regardless of if it's rented or not.
Yep.
Which we don't allow now.
Right, so this, so I I think, Jennifer, what I'm what I'm saying is, I think this is an important option. To be able to provide to the the small group of people in Holland who are likely to take advantage of it. And that includes the mother-in-law, that includes the disabled, that includes the age in place. You know, the the senior citizen who can no longer necessarily afford their full, their their taxes or their mortgage payment. And and does want to create a stream of income. It also, I think, provides the opportunity for that young couple that's looking to buy their first home, but might not be able to swing the full mortgage. My my wife loves to watch a lot of these, you know, buying buying your first home shows that are on, I guess it's HDTV. And I'm amazed at the number of places that folks look at where they say there's the house, but there's also the apartment that's attached to it. That that can provide you an income stream that will help you supplement their mortgage. And it suddenly creates a whole new realm of of housing for folks who might not be able to afford a house otherwise. Now, are there going to be a lot of these? As as Jenna said, no, there's not. We have, we've allowed a detached for five years. There've been five in five years. I don't think that there's going to be a huge number that do it. But if it if there's the opportunity to provide that level of housing for that small group. That this niche that I in hearing Ryan speak twice. Yeah, we're doing a lot of apartment complexes. Yes, we're building a lot of single family homes. But there's this small group of people that we're not being able, we're not meeting that need anywhere. And I see this as an opportunity to be able to do that.
Well, on top of that, too, all of those apartments and single family homes are not in the downtown neighborhoods. So to provide that other option for people who maybe work downtown and want to live downtown. Then they need those smaller units, which there just aren't that many. There was something else you said that. Oh, and I mean, just to reiterate, this Udo is for the next fifteen to twenty years. We know that this isn't going to happen tomorrow, but we have to plan for the next. To allow these property owners to be able to do that over the next fifteen to twenty years.
Yeah, so I would say I feel comfortable with the numbers we had a long time ago, the sixty-five hundred. But I also see the wisdom in going into this slow. You know, you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube. So I. Yeah, right. So I think, I know I've mentioned this before, but having a mechanism to, let's start out at eight thousand, but then let's drop it to seven thousand. And then six thousand five hundred. So we can backtrack anytime we want, but we get to where we want to be.
And I agree with Andrew, but only doing the opposite thing. I I think we we start slow and we look and see what happens. And if in a few years we say, you know what, maybe there is a need to to reduce those lot sizes a little more. We have the ability to make that recommendation to city council in the future. I'm just, I'm not a big fan of a mechanism that will kick in unless we don't do something about it. I'd I'd rather us have it to have to make an active decision to change rather than an active decision to prevent a change.
I agree. I agree with Nathan completely.
I would go then with, let's go with the eight thousand and the fifty foot lot minimum. And let's see if any toothpaste comes out of the tube.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I have two. I just have a couple of questions. Jenna, you didn't have an eight thousand square foot per unit with six a sixty foot frontage, right? Okay.
Though Dan made the point at the last meeting that the numbers would be the same.
Okay, I guess I thought I I made a note to myself that it seemed like it was the width. It was actually the frontage that increased the numbers more than the. Than the, so so it seems like that would, if we increased it to sixty, then so it would be more.
So.
So then.
It'd be less properties eligible. Width is at sixty.
Right.
Again.
That's what I meant to say. What'd you say, Jenna? I'm sorry.
Again, we went with Dan's analysis last week, though I could double check it.
No, that's okay. I understand. So. I also, based on what you said, Ron, and this is we're shifting out of TNR and and going back to an LDR question. Based on what you said about owner occupied earlier when we were talking about TNR, is that going to be the same issue? Will we will we be facing the same kind of complication with the owner occupied in LDR?
The the rules, the legal rules would stay the same. And that is would need to have, you know, rationale for the reg regulations that fit within the purposes of the the zoning enabling act.
Sorry, Jenna, you were gonna add something.
Sorry, I don't know how familiar he is. I I haven't briefed him specifically on that. In in recent weeks. So I was going to just kind of interject and and give a quick brief that it would be for. Just on lots that are ten thousand square feet or greater. Then all all of those lots would be eligible for a. Attached accessory dwelling unit as long as one unit's owner occupied, which is currently the standard of all ADUs. So that shouldn't be an issue because we can carry over that standard. Because detached ADUs have to be have an owner occupied on on the property as well. But then for conversions or an ADU conversion, whatever. We haven't yet really solidified a term for that yet. But those would be homes that would be converted without making any. Exterior improvement or. Changes, thank you. And one of the conditions for that, Ron, would be that that one of the units would have to be owner occupied. So that's specific to just ten thousand square foot lots and those two items. So it is a little bit different because the otherwise, you know, in TNR, it's two different categories was what was being discussed, so.
Right. Right, well, I think that the ADUs are are more of an accessory use. Although, you know, I haven't seen the regulations on those, the proposed ones. So, you know, maybe I'm speaking without knowledge on that. But but, you know, I think that that there, from what I see of current ADUs, they're smaller size. Would tend to be and and less density. So, you know, that that regulation, I think, would, you know, would work. You know, it is always a question. I mean, it's not something that's tried and true yet in the courts. I can't think of any case law that I've seen that that addresses that. We've had the, I think, the own, haven't we had the owner occupied requirement for the ADUs for some time, Jennifer, since we started allowing those?
Yes, and so that's for the detached ADUs. This is a new product, which would be an attached ADU. The attached ADU has to meet all of the same standards that will be attached ADU.
Yeah, so again, I I don't think that I've seen any appellate court decisions that address that issue. It's not been challenged so far over the, you know, a few number of years that we've had it. Well, it's been probably eight, nine years, ten years, Jenna.
Mark, I think it was six years.
Yeah, five or six years.
Yeah.
Okay. Does staff have what they need?
Yes, we do for that. Thank you. So moving on. The next item is regarding the NMU Neighborhood Mixed Use Zone District and Info Review. Okay, can everybody see the staff report?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Do you have a map of the NMU district?
Um, I can grab one from the.
I looked on Udo and it was really hard for me to even find any NMU district.
That they're very small, and that's an issue we have to figure out with the document, actually generally, with those inset maps. And how to how to show the really small districts effectively.
It's not just your age, Fred. It's not just your eyes.
Thank you, Chris. I can remove one comment from my list.
Yeah, we also need to figure out they're a little blurry in the current draft. We got to figure that out too. That that should be easier fix.
Two comments.
Um, is, can you see the staff report now?
Yep.
Okay, so let me bring up the, I just bring up Google real quick, or actually our Udo map, I mean.
Yeah, easier to see it on the story map. Story map will zoom.
Well, we are all familiar with three seventeen because it was a planning commission issue two months ago. And that one was discussed earlier with a. One of our neighbors.
Okay, can everybody see this map?
Yeah.
Yep.
Great, so the pink areas here are the NMU.
Okay.
So they're scattered, you know, throughout the neighborhood. I'm trying to just. Make it a little bit larger. So scattered throughout the the primarily. This core areas of the city. We do have some NMU larger properties that are east of US thirty-one. And while no, when we talk about setbacks, some differences that. That those have, we do also have the existing Central Park Market there. And that that's about it in terms of NMU. Okay, now, these are primarily existing C-one properties. Very few have been changed to NMU, very few properties. The only ones that have are just when there's been like a split zoning. And we've cleaned that up to change it to the NMU. And other than those two other properties that recently Planning Commission directed us to change, which was the. Fourteenth Street Church and the Centennial. Okay, so that that's what we're talking about. Going to go back, and again, that's on our our hollandudo.com website and the interactive maps. So if anyone wants to have that up while we discuss the planning commissioners specifically. Of course, you're welcome to do so. So I'm going to go back and find it first. Okay, here we go. Can everybody see that again?
Yep.
Mm hmm.
Great. Could you make that a little bigger?
There you go. I'm good.
Okay.
It's good with the smaller one, just so that everybody knows.
Okay, Fred, thanks.
Okay, um, so this is specifically talking about, so currently C one properties. Um, which is our neighborhood commercial zone district existing, like existing neighborhood commercial zone district. They require an infill review. Um, however, if you were to look in our zoning ordinance right now, the title of the infill regulations, review regulations is residential infill regulations. Specifically in that ordinance, it states that any lot within a C one neighborhood commercial zone district, which is proposed to be used for the construction or replacement of a new or relocated residential structure is therefore, that's how it it triggers the applicability um, for and and again, I I took that out of here. So um, so that's what triggers the applicability in specifically the C one zone district. Talking with Mark Vander Pluig, who authored this infill review. Um, and really, you know, diving into the ordinance language itself. Staff has found that that the intent of the infill review really was placed on residential buildings. Now, there was an inclusion of the C one zone district, but that's because right now in existing um, in existing zoning, you can have a, you could have two unit, like you could have a two unit duplex without needing a commercial um, use on that property. So what Mark has also concurred with is that really um, the the intent was just for those types of of structures when it was just a residential uh, structure, not um, when there was a mixed use structure, which is now the only types of uh, residential that that would be permitted in the NMU going forward. Um, but because it didn't specify that in the language in practice, staff has done infill reviews such as three seventeen central, which was alluded to previously. Um, has done the mixed use um, reviews, infill reviews, because this was not specified, that it's just for residential structures. Even though that was the intent, again, which is, which is provided by the title of the of the infill review. Um, like I said, you know, previously that it's residential infill regulations. And it's also provided, that intent is also provided um, as you go through the the criteria um, for for what needs to occur for an infill review, right? So it's specifically talking about porch heights. Um, you know, residential porches. Um, and and cornices and.
Yeah, architectural detail and compatibility with that.
Right, that are specific to residential structure.
Yeah.
So that is why staff is recommended, will still recommend that um, NMU be removed from infill review requirements. Um, and then it would only be, again, for residential uh, zone districts where actually, it would only be for the TNR zone district and the um, CNR zone district, Central Park, which is existing, right?
Yeah.
Um, and if any home is moved into um, say, the LDR zone district. If a home is actually moved, then an infill review is applicable based on the standards. So that's number one. Number two is, as we reviewed this, we then also thought, well, the thing is, though, that the requirement has also been up until now um, that in the TNR zone district and in the CNR zone district that non-residential uses would also need review. Um, and again, you know, we think about, well, what is the intent if it's for residential building, a church or a school, you know, they're they're not going to be able to meet that same the same architectural criteria as a home. So we're actually now thinking that, asking you to consider um, going a step further and removing the non-residential uses in the TNR and CNR zone districts from requiring infill review as well.
Well, I think that, just coming to your last point first, I think that I think that we have experienced a non-residential buildings being put into the TNR district. And there was a big outcry about that very thing about the architectural detail and the setbacks. And I think that there, I think that most of the planning commissioners thought that that was an issue. If you remember the property I'm talking about on Central and what was it like thirteenth or something like that with a former bar.
So this is three seventeen central, but that was in NMU. That, so, so I guess it's a different thing, right? There's, there's uh, maybe if you want to first consider the the NMU properties and then go to the non-residential in TNR and CNR.
Well, you have explained so much about this. I think, I think we could do this one first. I mean, that's just my own thought. You've already explained so much about this. Let's I I'm I'm in favor of of the staff's recommendation about this. At least about what you've written in this report.
And Fred, I would disagree because architectural detail is critical in any area you would consider infill. And the TNR, as we've defined it, has those details we'd love to keep. So if we don't want to doubt this one, then we need to write one. But we need an infill review if you're gonna build because, okay, if it if it's greater than one property. Then it's no, you know, if it's not near residential. Then it doesn't need to do that.
You're talking about the NMU now, right?
Yes.
NMU would always be by residential.
So let's, let's make sure it looks appropriate.
I but I guess I would, I guess I would say that uh, all NMU projects that come in, so please keep this this in mind, any new project that's gonna be coming in will be going through a site plan review process, either at the admin level or with the planning commission. And there certainly could be site plan review standards that are that are, you know, reviewed as a part of the site plan review process that can make sure that uh, whatever is being proposed is appropriate for a neighborhood commercial building. Okay, so then you're kind of more using other um, neighborhood commercial buildings is kind of the baseline. And you're not like saying, trying to make a a new neighborhood commercial building look like some, look like a house in the neighborhood. You have two completely different typologies here. Two different types of uses. And you really ought to be using other commercial, neighborhood, commercial or NMU uh, buildings is is kind of a baseline to draw on on if there's architect architectural elements that need to be worked with the applicant. So I I guess I just say, you know, there will be kind of a review. But it's going to be embedded in the site plan review, not a separate standalone infill review on it on top of a site plan review for an NMU building, so.
I'm not sure the site plan review really protects or 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 helps to reflect the existing character of a neighborhood. I I feel like we've come up against that quite often. Um, that we're that what the 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 criteria we need to look at it doesn't actually allow for, at least this is the way I felt, is that it doesn't allow for us to to really address architectural standards and things like that.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, yeah, so so I I agree with Dave that it that I feel like there needs to be, we, if there was some way that we can ensure that the NMU buildings reflect the character of the neighborhood in a way, because I can, I can see where, if it's the, if it's the character of a commercial building somewhere else in the city, it wouldn't necessarily match the neighborhood. It it just feels like it needs, it makes more sense. And I understand what you're saying, Mark, that, you know, obviously it can't look like a house. So where's the middle ground there for this? For 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 these properties?
And then what are you, what are you gonna try to achieve? So um, let's, let's you know, somebody may say, well, you know, the neighborhood commercial building has to be setbacked. It has to be setback fifteen feet because that's what the homes are setback in that area. I guess I would then say drive me around any neighborhood commercial area in the T, you know, in the central city neighborhood. And tell me then that is the urban design that you would want to see for a new neighborhood commercial building. I guess I would say that's not what you want to see. You want, you want to see new neighborhood commercial buildings that are very walkable, that are right up on the sidewalk. That have that relationship of being able to people to look in display windows and and people can look out. You know what I'm talking about. So uh.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about setbacks. I'm actually okay with the setbacks.
Yeah.
That you've established. I'm fine with them.
Okay, so what what other elements would it be then? Are you looking at construction materials? Are you, are we wanting to say, okay, if you're in a neighborhood and there's a preponderance of gable, gable facing the street, okay, of of homes, um, and they're two-story in character. Um, would we then say that a commercial building cannot have a flat roof? Um, and it has to have a gable on it facing the street? Um, construction materials, would it have to be clabbered siding? It couldn't, it couldn't have brick. I mean, so if there's all, you know, preponderance of just regular siding, wood siding in the neighborhood. Are we, you know, so I guess I'm just saying, what 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 elements are we going to say then? Um. That we're gonna require for a neighborhood commercial building?
Well, I don't see the infill, what are, I don't see the infill on the screen that you already have established for residential. Um, so I'm just wondering if there's something similar that could be established for the for the NMU. And I think it's, I think it's, I I think that um, one of the commenters, I think, made a, asked a a good question. If, and this is, this came up when we were talking about that Central Avenue piece of property, too. If it's twenty percent, it's only twenty percent commercial and eighty percent residential, then that we're, and this, and again, this was, I mean, I was having this argument back when we were looking at that property. We're 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 making it, we're we're making it apply, we're applying the standards of a commercial building to a building that's only twenty percent commercial.
Yeah, on the ground floor, but that's, we had a long discussion and the planning commission arrived at only wanting to require a minimum of twenty twenty.
Yeah, I don't remember that. And I made it, I sent a note to Jenna. I don't remember landing on that. I thought that we had had a discussion about that. That eighty percent residential on the ground floor seemed, because we were having a discussion about uh, whether, what would happen if it converted? Could it, I can't remember exactly. It was something about converting back to commercial. I can't remember exactly.
No, it was definitely, you definitely landed on the twenty percent commercial for NMU and then eighty percent commercial for CMU. So there was a bunch of different percentages that were provided by staff. Staff certainly was not in favor of the twenty percent. Um, but that's where planning commission ended up um, based on, and this was brought back up by Andrew Blunt, actually. Um.
I do remember that, yeah.
So that that was a that was the consideration of planning commission. Can you see the standards that are listed here on the?
Yeah.
In the staff report. So, I mean, we could write something that would be based on NMU, though we staff don't know specifically what you play, what you would specifically want to have as a qualifier. So we would need to get that information from you as to, you know, what what would pass or what wouldn't pass. Um, so I mean, I'm just gonna run through them really quickly, just to give a better sense of what our residential infill standards are. Um, we have changed a couple of things. Um, which you may recall um, in terms of of the comparison between what's existing and what is being proposed for Udo. But building setbacks, the front yard building setback with, shall comply with the zone district setback requirements. Height, same same deal, comply with the zone district requirements. First floor elevation height, no higher than the average height of the first floor elevations of the principal structures on each side of the infill property. Um, so again, you know, if you think about a um, you know, a a church or something, and this again is is looking at the TNR zone district. Each side of that that property is likely going to be residential. So do we then, you know, make that comparison to residential properties? Scale, finished floor elevations, height of exposed basement walls and front yard grades elevation shall be similar to those of adjacent dwellings. Width and general proportions shall be consistent with or similar to the character of the neighborhood, form, masting and directional emphasis conform to the established horizontal or vertical character of the neighborhood and the neighborhood's established building form and masting characteristics. Facade materials and details shall be consistent with the neighborhood's discernible patterns of detail, including but not limited to door, window trim, corner boards, cornice, uh, shutters, et cetera. Uh, material siding width and relative proportions of doors and windows shall be compatible with the neighborhood character. Exposed wood shall be painted or stained. Um, and generally be compatible with buildings on the property and with within the neighborhood character. Porches enclosed or not enclosed shall be similar and designed to existing porches in the neighborhood. Um, et cetera, et cetera. Roof style and pitch shall be architecturally consistent with prevailing neighborhood character. Building separation consistent with the character of the neighborhood, orientation. Front facades and primary entrances built of principal structures, self faceless street. Um, garages and ADUs shall be oriented consistent with the character of garage orientations in the neighborhood. And alleys, vehicle access to the property may be limited to the alley. So those are the standards. Then there's the review procedures. Um, but those are the standards. So if you think about a commercial building, a neighborhood commercial building um, trying to meet those standards. It seems unlikely that 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 building is going to meet those standards.
So, let's just say we pick five, seven, nine, and eleven. And say that those would be appropriate to also apply to a commercial building in the neighborhood. Then you would need, you have standards based on those. Kind of like a checklist to be able to follow.
It could, but, okay, so looking at the width. I mean, so the width of.
And like the general proportion of the building.
Okay.
And then seven, the facade of materials. I think that most people, like especially in the historic district, would be concerned about. We don't need porches, obviously, in a commercial building. So that's not one of the criteria. But like a roof pitch and style.
Hmm.
Maybe. And then eleven, orientation, you'd always want it facing the street, right? Because we want to.
So the historic district doesn't um, require infill review because they have a other process.
Yeah, the other areas, I guess, the TNR I meant more, but and.
And again, that, this is what we already have for TNR for residential.
Right, that's what I mean, but for the the commercial buildings.
So are you talking, I'm sorry, for clarification, are you talking about NMU? Or are you talking about TNR? The commercial building or the non-residential buildings in TNR?
The NMU, in those residential neighborhoods. Right?
Yeah, and I would say both.
Okay.
Why not? I mean, if you're gonna, you know, it's really really similar. We're just trying to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood.
I think it's possible, Jenna. I think it's possible, Jenna, to, I, I'd like, I like the direction that you're going, Brooke. Um. I think it's possible to, I, I just, I just want to be sure that. That there's, that there's something baked into the process that allows for. Uh, some design control. So maybe that's a good, maybe the. What, um, Brooke is recommending is a good idea. I don't know, I have to, I, I, I haven't actually looked to, to choose any of these, but. But that would make it easier for the staff, I suppose, because it's already written, you would just need to choose. We would just choose ones that already exist. As opposed to creating a whole new infill requirement.
So then if I'm, uh, understanding this correctly, then, um, Jen and I will, will be coming up with standards then. That will. Apply to a site plan review for properties in, in the, that are NMU. That fall within the central neighborhood area then, and then those will be additional. Site plan review, architectural review. Items then.
Unless you want to add design review into the site review process. I mean, that, that's the one component that we're talking about, that we've never really been able to, to use.
Yeah.
If you just want to make a blanket addition to the site review process to include some kind of design review.
Yeah.
I think everybody would be happy with that.
Yep, I would be happy with that. I don't know if that's.
So then you're talking about every zone district? So I mean, that's why we have a form-based code for some of.
Yeah.
The districts. And not for other districts.
Is there a way to work the form-based code into this somehow? Re- refer to the building type standards for mixed-use buildings or something like that? I think we have to look at them to see if that makes sense on a specific standard by standard basis, but it's again, something already exists in the ordinance and is designed for this type of building.
Oh, that's a good idea.
I, I think we're all on the same page in, in terms of what we want to achieve.
Yeah.
And what I keep going to is either the, the two neighborhoods are, I keep looking at our blocks, I keep thinking in my head of. Our Washington Square for one. And then the other is the, the thirteenth and Maple, which you actually have on the website, picture of for the NMU district.
So Washington Square is a form-based code district.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just talking about the look and the design standard of what I, when I picture a neighborhood mixed use. Or a commercial use within the TRN district. Those are two. Things that I, that I envision that would fit in those neighborhoods that I think is what we want to try to achieve. Um, and they're definitely commercial. They look different than the residences that are there, but they definitely fit within the neighborhoods that they're, that they're in. Both in terms of design and in scale. And I think that's, that's what we want to try to achieve. And I like what Chris said about, you know, are there form-based code?
Yeah.
That we can do that. I'm not sure the best way to, the best method to achieve it, but I think we all are on the same page in terms of what it is that we're trying to achieve. You know, we don't want a skyscraper built. In the NMU district, we want to, we want the ability to have these small commercial nodes. Um, of which I'm sitting in one right now, folks, in a commercial building that looks like a house. Um. But across the street is a grocery store and.
And we, we all want a Central Park Market.
Yeah, that's exactly, you know, it's a, it's a small neighborhood grocery store. Um, we've got a small neighborhood auto repair place right across the street. Um, it's a, it's a wonderful little commercial node that we're trying to encourage in these limited spaces. Throughout the city that help encourage that walkability and help, and help encourage people to have that identity within their own individual neighborhood. And the idea is, how do we, how do we put standards in place? That allow, that, that help achieve that. And that help ensure that that's going to happen.
So I'm looking at the mixed-use building standards and the form-based code right now. Um, there are a couple in here that definitely would not apply to what we're talking about, uh, for instance, requiring the commercial first story. Extend upon the, uh, for the entire width of the building, right? The twenty percent, eighty percent requirement doesn't, uh, mix with that. Um. It, uh, the requirement for a minimum distance. Uh, between storefronts. Um. That also wouldn't apply, but there is some good stuff in here about glass and transparency. Um. And location of parking and things like that, that, that are probably would be helpful, so. Um, you know, a, a cross-reference to a few of these standards might work. Uh, but one thing this doesn't have is. Some of the architecture stuff that's been talked about, we did, we did, we did not include a lot of that in a form-based code generally.
Hmm.
Um. Is, we kind of decided way back when we were talking about this, that, that the form-based code isn't about making the architectural decisions for people within the downtown. Um, but within the neighborhoods, some of that architecture stuff is reflected in the infill. Requirements is, uh, has always been a little bit more regulated for obvious reasons, so. Uh, it's sort of a, um. Hit and miss when it comes to the form-based code standards.
Right, and NMU isn't even form-based code in our listings, right?
No, it's not. It's not designed for that. It would simply be a cross-reference to that language, so we wouldn't have to write it again, you know? It wouldn't be bringing it into the form-based code or anything like that.
Well, staff can look at some options, but, you know, perhaps it would be helpful if we could, you know, maybe have a really small committee. Um, of planning commissioners to, to look at it as well. Um.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue the discussion, Jenna.
Yeah, that sounds good, Jenna, and maybe pull someone from the Historic District Commission. That is familiar with the type of language you want to use.
No.
We need to bring the Historic District Commission into this, so.
It's a whole different. Ballgame.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're not even talking anything remotely close to. You know, conformity with the, you know, the kind of standards that the Historic District.
Right, right. They're, they're just smart people that know what they're talking about. They know not everything needs to be historic, is my point.
You know, the thing, the thing that continues to confuse me right from the get-go was. I think we're talking about consituations when we're, when we're looking at. Creating a residential property in the NMU district. Is that correct? Is that what we're trying to control? This is what it says on the page, the intent is, is to including. Residential infill regulate, just, just newly residential structures built in the former C1 in the NMU.
Yeah, so that, again, that was the intent. Um, but like I said, it wasn't specified that it was just for residential structures. And therefore, in practice, it has been taken to mean any. Um, any development that has a residential component in the NMU zone, or in the C1 zone district.
And, um, keeping in mind that the NMU. Includes such things as vehicle repair, vehicle sale. Oil drilling, gas drilling, schools, funeral homes, drive-through restaurants. I mean, it's, it's, it's quite a district that has a lot of uses in it and. It seems like we're spending an awful lot of time trying to control for one small thing in a district that really has a lot of. Huge variety of possible uses in it. And I'm just. I'm just kind of confused why we're spending so much time in this. It seems like it's kind of a small matter. But that's why I wanted to see the map of where these places were throughout the city, and I guess. We have experienced some things where we didn't want to control what was going, but it, we were trying to control a commercial building. Going into, basically a neighborhood.
Yeah, for, for the folks that live near these districts, it's really important, Fred, remember, we took, we specifically took gas, or, uh, yeah, gas stations out of NMU. There, it's, it's very important to the people who live nearby.
Yeah.
Um, and I.
Look at the allow.
We need to make sure that we're protecting the quality of, or the, the quality or the, the nature of those neighborhoods, because it is, it's neighborhood commercial.
Yeah, if it is in neighborhoods, then I'm all in favor of trying to control anything that we're putting in. But if it's a district that contains oil drilling and, and things like that, and then I think we're wasting our time. Putting residential uses into the oil drilling area.
Well, the oil drilling stuff is a carryover from the current ordinance, which has provisions allowing oil drilling throughout the city. With regulations and it is sort of, is not unique to the NMU district.
But we're talking about vehicle sales.
And, and the other thing about that, those two uses, Fred, is that those are not permitted, new, uh, new. Uh, uses of that nature are not permitted. Only existing uses are considered special land uses and can be expanded using special use process.
Okay.
So it's not like we're. Because as, as the mayor pointed out, right, he's got a, a vehicle repair right there in the NMU district, or what, what would be an NMU district. Um, but yeah, I don't think we want to see at three seventeen central, we don't want to see vehicle repair. Right?
No.
Um, and I, I think everyone agrees on that, so, um. But I, I think your point is well taken that these. May take a form that isn't a, a mixed-use building. Simply if that's the market, right? But there are controls on some of those more intensive uses, just to make it clear, those are, they, they, they're either. Only allowed in specific instances, or they're, uh, the oil and gas thing is a citywide. Thing that has been.
I was just reviewing the Udo today with this, with this district, looking at the permitted uses and. All these things were listed as permitted uses and is where, where I came up with this list, but maybe they're permitted under very strict requirements.
I would say that's true on oil and gas and, um. Just on the vehicle ones, they are, it's very specifically existing are allowed to expand via special use. New locations are not permitted, and maybe we need to make sure that's clear in that chart. I'm looking at it right now. It says special land use for expansion of existing uses. Maybe it should very clearly say new or not permitted.
Well, I'm always in favor of having some kind of compatibility review for putting buildings into residential areas. But it's just not clear to me that this is what we're doing here.
Well, I guess that, that's what the intent is, right, is.
Yeah.
Is that any of the. Any build, I mean, and I, I guess we need that direction from planning commission too. Is it just? For mixed-use buildings or is it for any commercial building that's in NMU? Um, because drive, drive-throughs are permitted in, in NMU.
Yes.
Um, they just require, you know, not to have a speaker. Um, like, you know, Wake Up Cafe, for instance, that's existing in South Shore Village. Um. So.
They have their space to meet the dimensional requirements. Sorry, Jenna.
Well, yeah, of course, of course.
But it means they can't go on any lot that's NMU, right?
Yeah, right. I think generally speaking, Jenna, yes. The, to the answer to that question. Um, and I understand that there's not, there, there are not a lot of NMU properties. But I'm, I, I, I'm willing to do what you suggested and just have a, a conversation outside of. Beyond this meeting and see if we can come up with some suggestions. Because I'm not sure we're going to get to that right now unless you want to, unless that's the direction you want to go.
I'm very comfortable as well. I just don't have the capacity to be involved in those discussions, but I, I trust Lynn.
Well, I brought it up, so I'm gonna, I'll be a part of it.
It's all yours, Lynn.
Yeah.
Hey, Lynn, Lynn, I would, uh, I like Brooke's suggestion and I would work with you if we start there.
Okay. Because. Well, I'm working, we're working with Jenna on this. I'm not going to do it on my own.
Well.
And all of her, all of her, all of the extra time she has.
I think it'll also be Mark and, and Chris as well.
Okay.
Um, okay.
Excuse me, I need to interrupt just a minute. I, I need to leave. I've got a five thirty commitment here.
Yes, thank you so much.
I'll sign off. Thank you, and wow, you guys put a lot of work into this. It's a lot of details. That's amazing. Thanks, bye.
Yep.
I gotta sign off too. I got a, a sun soccer game to go to, so I was planning on this being done closer to five, so. Have you been to our?
You've been to one of these before?
Yeah, soccer game sounds like a lot of fun. See ya.
Thank you, Mark.
Breast warm.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, um. So this is about, uh, NMU setbacks, so that was also raised as a concern to bring back. Um, whether or not setbacks should be. Um, aligned with the, the TNR zone district or not. Um, staff would still very much recommend keeping the setbacks as we've proposed them here. Which is very similar to the existing C1. Um, mainly because they are different. Um, they are different areas. They're, they're, this is for. Uh, walkable, commercial area with, uh. With structures close by the street, on the, the sidewalk. Um, close to the sidewalk. Um, if you had setbacks, you know, people that are visiting these. Uh, commercial, uh, stores. Um. Or commercial buildings, I should say, you know, would then. You know, there wouldn't be a clear division between a residential neighborhood with a further setback with a lawn. Um, and a commercial building where you can walk into, so it would. It would likely increase the foot traffic on. Uh, adjacent residential neighborhoods. Um, rather than making that, that specific delineation of a commercial zone district. We do, I should mention that we have proposed. That east of, uh, US thirty-one, which I had show, I shown, I showed in the map earlier. Um, that those properties do have a larger setback because the context of those areas is very different. On Sixteenth Street, for instance, versus. Um. In like our existing neighborhood district, like if you think about thirteenth and Maple, for instance, that was used previously.
Very different, yes.
Yeah, Brooke. I, I agree with Jenna on this. I think, I think that we, we keep the setbacks the way that they're proposed. Because again, as we said, this is, these are commercial districts within neighborhoods. Um, and we're not trying to make these buildings look like they're. Um, they're residential buildings within the neighborhood with those same setbacks. They're, they're commercial buildings that fit in the neighborhood, and I think the setbacks that they've got here. Work just fine.
I did have one question. All the five-foot setbacks we were talking about as a minimum, we've changed to seven. On the one proposed NMU, it's zero or five, should it not be zero or seven? Just to be consistent.
Hmm, um, okay, so, I mean, just so staff's recommendation was five to. Um. To just, you know, have as few, you know. Random numbers as possible. Um, you know, have like a zero or a five or, you know. Um. And the zero is. If it's adjacent, if, if the wa, you know, if, if the wall, like thirteen and Maple. That could be zero. But if you'd like to increase it by two feet, we, we can do that.
Just for consistency.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about that's consistent with the residential neighborhoods surrounding it, right, Dave?
For side yards, yes.
Yeah, for sides, yeah.
Yep.
Though actually, the side yard in our TRN and in TNR is five feet. If you look at the chart here.
We did change that, yeah.
Yeah, and we added the seven in LDR, but not, but you're right, not in TRN.
I, no, we changed it in both.
Chris?
It used to be with no less than eighteen.
Let me look it up, I.
I think that's LDR that you're thinking of, Dave, but you've been around longer than I have.
It was both, because remember it was, it was a minimum of. Well, it used to be a minimum of seven with a combined of eighteen, but we decided fourteen was enough.
It wasn't.
I'm almost there, alright. Side setbacks, uh, as currently drafted, LDR, seven, CNR, seven, MDR, five, TNR, five. So you guys are both right.
LDR and TNR are different. They're five and seven.
Yes, there's a difference between two of them.
Yep.
But we, we had that conversation and it used to be minimum of seven with a total of eighteen in TNR. You say TNR is still seven?
In our, right now, in our TRN, it's, it's right here in front of, um, can you, can everybody see this?
Yeah.
Yep.
Chart, okay. Um, so right now in T, TNR. We have a five-foot minimum, a total of two sides thirteen feet. And then no maximum.
Mm-hmm.
Proposed is to take out that total of two sides. Item, um, to clean that up, just five-foot minimum in TNR. And we're saying the same in NMU, five-foot minimum. Um, when it's not immediately adjacent to another building.
I, I remember the conversation you're talking about, Dave, and I, my recollection, it was L, it was about LDR.
Uh, I pulled them both up because we were in that conversation. I said, well, wait a second now. It's because you don't want buildings that close, even downtown, because you've got to get fire equipment in. And I know. And I know Dan was on that call also. And I thought we had decided that we were going seven for L.
We don't have that in our notes. So if planning commission would like for it to be seven, we can change it. But that's not where, that's not where we ended up. This is all also been looked at by the fire department, so um, that, you know, isn't a concern for them.
I'm good with where, the way you have it.
Mm-hmm. Let's keep it the same as it, as it is now. Keep it at five in TRN.
Okay, so that's two against one. Or does anyone else want to say anything?
I was, I was staff's.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
I'm okay with it.
Sorry, Dave.
Oh, bro. I'm okay with it.
Okay, so.
I'll give half a vote to Dave, half a vote to you to decide.
Always Switzerland.
I don't think Hillary wants.
Always. Just sometimes.
Okay, so are we good then with all of the setbacks for NMU or are there any other issues that you want to look at?
I think it looks good.
We're good.
Andy pipes in all of a sudden.
No, I said I agreed with staff on it last one. Somebody just stepped on me. Jeez.
All right, moving on.
Okay, moving on.
Almost there. Jenna, you need a new computer.
This is working pretty well for me today, I must say.
No, it's been.
Um, okay, can everybody see this map?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not there yet.
There we go.
Okay. Okay, so we, planning commission had revisited the Hope neighborhood boundaries. Probably about a year and a half, even maybe ago.
Yeah.
Um, currently the boundary, it goes to seventeenth and it goes out to river. We staff had recommended and planning commission at that time had agreed to pull up the boundary up to sixteenth uh, in the south and then on the west side to pull in the boundary from river to central.
Yeah.
Um, there's been concern but brought by a resident and then potentially by some planning commissioners that, that would mean that these twenty some houses or properties would then be eligible for would be eligible for duplexes or multifamily. Whereas when you're in the whole neighborhood district, you're, you're not eligible for that. In, in relook, you know, in retrospect, we're, you know, where staff is okay with whichever direction you want to go with river. Um, whether or not you want it to extend to river or you want to extend or go back to central. Um, again, it's the, you know, twenty homes. We would though, very much still agree that and recommend that we do pull the boundary up to sixteenth. Rather than it going all the way down to seventeen.
I like sixteenth.
I like river.
I like.
Me too. I wonder.
Who said they like central?
I do. I like central. I, I'll tell you why. I think, I think that, first of all, I think the discussion that we had showed that that was quite an extension for the Hope neighborhood to go all the way to river. And it didn't make a lot of sense looking at it now. And also making those properties available to other uses or more uh, multi-family uses or other kinds of uses was, would made a lot of sense with what else we're doing. That's why.
Sure, but we pulled back on all of what else we were doing. We're no longer densifying, so I think it.
Most were densified in the whole neighborhood. Well, of course we're densifying. We just, we just re, reiterated that for the other districts.
As a former Hope student and for somebody who's looked at this neighborhood for the last thirty-five years, the lines as they're drawn right now are the ones that in my mind make the most sense as to what the Hope neighborhood is and where Hope students are living and where those, where those rentals are. Um, that, there are a lot of places between Central and River that are, that are Hope students. Um, and it, it just seems to me that, that Central's a more arbitrary line in that regard than Central is. I think that including those blocks, which is really more natural to what the actual uses are in that property or in the, in that space.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't those Hope students be able to live if it wasn't in that district?
Oh, yeah, they could. But if we're, if we're looking at creating an overlay district that's, that is designed to address some of the unique issues that, that come with the student housing, this seems like the natural line to me for that.
Now, just to clarify, Jenna, this Hope neighborhood district, does that mean that Hope can make more fraternity and sorority houses in this area?
No, Hope has nothing to do with it. We just needed to call it something.
It's, it's actually the exact opposite of that, right?
Just clarifying. Dave, settle down.
You didn't need to yell at Brooke.
I live with this, Dave, but what can I say, you know?
Again, the Hope neighborhood district means that you can only have a single family home. You can't have an ABU. Um, is there anything you're missing?
It restricts your uses. Like other neighborhoods would be allowed to have.
Right, exactly. That's why I don't like it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree with the mayor that it makes sense to have at river, uh, because this is the Hope District neighborhood. But if we want to change the restrictions that we have on there, um, I could see that making sense and we should do it within the whole district. Talking about housing choice again, um, we're asking everyone in college to live with three roommates. Instead of perhaps dividing a house in two and letting someone live with only one other person. So just think about what we're requiring here.
So that's not part of what, what this is about. That's a whole other.
Right, let's keep it at river is the short end, I think.
One quick question, is not river itself part of the form base code?
It is, except that it was pointed out, which is correct, that the homes, that the single family homes um, were staying at TNR. So they, so the single family homes, because we don't have a building type for a single family home is uh, TNR. So again, there, there's, I believe, twenty-two properties right here. Um, and those are the ones that would be affected. So right now they're in, the thought was to take them out to allow for more multiple potential housing. Now, you know, we haven't said that, I haven't fully um, you know, measured each of these properties lots to see whether or not they would even be eligible under the eight thousand. Um, but again, you know, either way, it has a, to staff, it's twenty proper, twenty or so properties. Either, either way, I think, you know, we, we're okay, but it's completely up to planning commission.
I voted for river. The river boundary.
I like this one too.
Yeah.
Supportive of that, obviously.
I'll be the only dissenting voice and I'm, I'm sure I'm right.
The restrictions on the Hope neighborhood in the future will come to it, back to it later.
You'll all.
Yeah, I agree with Andrew. I do agree with Andrew there.
Oh, Fred.
Instead of six cars, then we'd allow twelve in the driveway. That's okay.
Sure, Dave.
Yeah, we purposefully decided that.
Let's go to the next item.
I do have um, one more thing about NMU. So done with this.
You can't quit, are you, Andrew?
Can't go back.
It was on the agenda last time and it fell off the agenda. About the NMU height, the forty feet.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for asking that. I wondered that too. Yes.
And then I also caught that we're requiring sixteen foot first floors on all commercial property. I don't know if you got my note about that, Jenna. Um, but that seems really high. And then that influences what I think about the forty versus thirty-five.
So the sixteen foot is just in the form base code.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and the height is just consistent with what is existing in the TNR zone district, which means the nearby buildings, which is also forty-five in TNR.
And I know Dan Tiley spoke to that the last time too. Last Tuesday. The forty-five feet.
Right. So C one is thirty-five and we're proposing forty. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
But yeah, it's actually a smaller maximum height to the TNR district that surrounds it in many cases.
I, I, I do, I just do get the neighbor concerns. A house with a turret or a peak going up that high isn't the same as a rectangular prism going up that high. So I would be in favor of dropping it five feet.
Not to add complexity, but there's also the step back requirement that we have in uh, the form base code. Right, where the first.
This isn't about form base code. This is just.
I know. I'm just saying, we, just as an option, we could say the third floor has to be stepped back a certain distance residential. Jenna's shaking her head. It's too complex this late in the process.
I'd rather just go back to thirty-five. That's.
I'm, I, I, I think I agree with Andrew on the thirty-five. I'm starting to picture forty-five in my head and four stories and those, that just doesn't seem right to me.
Yeah.
It's, I think, I think the thirty-five keeps it at three stories. That's a, a whole lot more fitting with that NMU district.
Okay.
Bye with me.
Yes. Thank you, Andrew, for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we can finish by six, guys.
Nope.
You.
Don't jinx it.
Absolutely can, because we just have one more item for today and one property. So, and I think it's an easy one.
What about item five?
Item five. Um, okay, can everybody see this?
Not yet.
Not yet. Oh, no.
Happening. There we go.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Okay. So this is just one property to bring back to you. Um, noting that at the March ninth meeting, we will have several more. Um, and that'll be like our last go through of the, uh, of all of the properties in the zone districts. Um, this one came to our attention. It's two fifty-seven East Thirty-second Street. Um, just on the other side of the railroad tracks and Lincoln area, we, it's currently split zoned. Um, LDR, I'm sorry, R one and industrial. We originally had proposed it to go to HGR uh, because of its location near the Apple Tree Development um, and the thought of uh, making this area HGR. Um, the owner has contacted us and said, you know, actually, we already, we have a warehouse on the site that we actively are using. HGR doesn't make any sense for that. Um, can we put that at, at, at RMU? Um, and staff that very much recommends that at this point. I mean, we already have RMU that, that extends um, onto the east side of, of Lincoln as well. So we would be comfortable with that.
I agree with staff.
I'm with you.
Me too.
Totally fine.
Mm-hmm. Great.
The, the planning commission recommends you do this.
So we are finished. Um, so in summary, Chris will make um, those updates into the Udo. Like we said in the beginning of the meeting, we won't be updating the Udo on the website. Though we will have a page up there that says these are the changes that um, have been made. We will reach out to Lynn. Um, and was there anyone else? Andrew, did you mention that you were interested in being on this little subcommittee?
Uh, yeah, you know, I like to talk about stuff. If, if there's room for another one, I'll show up.
There's a room.
Okay, so Lynn and we'll reach out to Lynn and Andrew um, and see what we can do about uh, NMU infill. Um, and other than that, we will see everybody on March ninth, uh, we, we will likely, in fact, we will uh, need to do, you know, pre-study session, go into meeting and then come back to study session to, to finish Udo. In the meantime, please, if you could go through the link, the Udo that's on the website right now um, and provide any comments, that would be great. Knowing though that anything that's big and glaring, um, I will catch and uh, and, and will resolve those issues. Um, we will send you an update once we get it to planning commission uh, so that you have, always have the latest version. Um, so you're aware of, of what we're doing. And then we will be working soon on that staff report um, or executive summary, if you, if you will, uh, that will uh, go along with the the Udo, um, both to your, your April thirteenth meeting and then on to city council. Please reach out if you have any questions or concerns or thoughts. And otherwise, have a great, great uh, evening and week.
Oh, sure. Thank you very much.
Everybody. All right.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks, Chris.
Bye.
Bye, you guys.